Meeting is available to the public. Um, at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to, I believe, uh, Mr. Rogers. You taking the lead?
Thank you, Mayor. And once again, good evening to the rest of council as well. Uh, before we jump into continuing discussions on items from the June 22nd, uh, oil and gas, uh, study session. I, I did want to kind of take out a moment, kind of frame out the objective for tonight's meeting, uh, and Thursday's if needed. Obviously, the objective today is kind of move through the remaining eight topics that we have. Solicited feedback, uh, direction if needed to advance LDC proposed language, uh, recap previous policy and or code provisions. Uh, once we've been able to get through those items, conclude, um, the study sessions at the end of this week, uh, the goal within for staff to begin finalizing language to initiate the next stage of planning commission and city council hearings. And we do have a slide later on in our discussions with a proposed schedule. Um, that being said, when we get to each particular item, we, we plan on spending about 15 minutes on each item. Uh, if necessary, once again, depending on discussion. Hopefully, this will allow for suitable, once again, conversation amongst you all as council, but also allow for response to staff's questions and or positions that we've taken on those various topics of interest. Um, that being said, uh, I'll now turn over to Dominic Markinelli, uh, to get us started.
All right. Thank you, Director Rogers, and thank you to council. Um, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. And we'll go ahead and jump into the presentation.
Let me, uh, let me pause for one second. Um, is our, is our IT director on? Uh, Councilwoman Smith, can I get into the meeting?
Uh, Justin Bingham is not on tonight, but Terry Sirens is from IT. Uh, let me work with Terry on getting, uh, council member Smith access, Mr. Our Mayor Hughesman.
Thank you.
All right. It sounds like we're still waiting on, um, one more attendee here, but, um, figure that we can go ahead and just start the presentation. Um, in terms of how we play.
He might want to wait, Dominic.
I'm sorry, wait.
It's, it's a council member that we're waiting on. I think he might want to wait. Unless you get directions from the mayor to continue, it's just pause for a moment.
Agreed.
Well, hang tight. While we are waiting on council member Smith, may I just, uh, mention, I know there's a lot to go through on this issue. It's very important. I think every time we talk about this subject, there's, there's so much to talk about. Um, I think there's a concern that some council member voices may not be heard. And so I wanted to recommend council to make sure that everybody gets a chance to talk. Um, if you find yourself speaking regularly, try and pause to give everybody a chance to speak. And you know, the mayor is going to be looking to try and help facilitate the discussion. I will try as well to make sure that we get the feedback on the specific question and then identify additional questions, but we want to make sure everybody both understands what's going on and then gets to have their voice heard as well. Um, I still think it's, um, a time for an open discussion. Uh, but making sure that everybody gets a chance to speak is certainly critical. So, uh, just a recommendation for helping tonight go smoothly. Thank you.
I'm sorry I was late. I'd like to ask a question. Are we not picking up where we left off on the first study session on oil and gas LDC?
We are. So in that first study session, we had a total of 16 items. We were able to get halfway through. Uh, obviously, we did table one conversation, uh, which we will go back to tonight. So we will be picking off, picking up from there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Mayor Hughesman, council member Smith is in attendance now. I apologize for the error.
No worries. Thank you. Please, uh, proceed with the presentation.
All right. So starting with the first slide here, just to kind of give an overview and kind of further address, uh, council member Noble's question. Um, so we've broken this into two separate presentations. Um, the idea and the intent would be to cover as much as we can tonight, potentially both presentations if possible. Um, and then having that Thursday study session reserved for any additional time that council needs to discuss the remaining items. Um, so the way that we've structured the presentations is part one is going to be covering the remaining items not addressed to the June 22nd study session. Um, and that includes rehashing, um, some of the items that there may not have been of an overall consensus on. Um, so picking up where we left off and then part two is going to be a discussion regarding reaffirming council's directions on the items that were covered on June 22nd. So going back through very briefly and quickly and just saying, here's what was presented, here's the direction that was provided to staff. Um, this is how staff is interpreting that direction. If there's any more thoughts or concerns or issues that we want to raise regarding those topics to have that discussion. Um, and then basically that, and then we'll get into, um, a proposed public hearing schedule moving forward. So following these two study sessions, staff will make revisions to the March draft or the March 10th draft based on council feedback as well as the changes that, um, staff indicated that they were going to be making based on public input. Um, so the intent of these study sessions are to, to receive that, that council feedback and consensus and get the information necessary to move forward with revising the draft and bringing these items to both planning commission and city council. So again, with that, at the end of, at the end of each topic, so we're going to go through and we're going to pause at the end of each topic and have a facilitated discussion. Um, Jason's gonna, I'm going to go through and talk more about the, the substantive information and sort of policy issues. And then Jason will be sort of framing the discussion and, um, facilitating the feedback and, and the discussion that you all have. Um, and then this is not any different than the last June 22nd study session. So any items that are highlighted in red are proposed language additions by staff and items that are struck and out and highlighted in red are proposed to be removed from the draft. Um, one item that we kind of wanted to start off with before getting into the more substantive, um, items are sort of breaking out just generally, um, code issues versus policy issues. So you'll notice if you look at this table here, um, there are a number of items that are potentially only policy issues, potentially only code issues or potentially both. So looking at some of the, the items for service use agreements, for example, um, some of that item, some of that information may contain, um, specific code language and city regulations or requirements that dictates certain aspects, but also part of this, it could be a discussion regarding how, um, city staff generally takes a policy stance or approach towards addressing certain items. So we've attempted to highlight each of the topics that we're discussing within this specific presentation. So this is presentation one. When we get into presentation two, I have another slide that goes over this, but just to kind of highlight, um, the differentiation of, and kind of the difference between policy versus code and how that line may not be primary in all circumstances. So where we left off, so this is the, the first item that we're covering tonight that wasn't discussed in the original study session, um, was regarding traffic impact fees. Uh, one council member wanted to ensure that the city should not collect any duplicative portion of the road impact fee for oil and gas sites that are already just addressed and discussed with the oil and gas, gas impact fee adopted last year. So this was passed last year and basically requires oil and gas operators, depending on what type of pipeline alignment they're using, um, whether or not they're using pipelines to, um, pay a fee to the city, um, for potential road degradation that could occur from truck traffic from these facilities. Um, and that's limited by, um, state law, basically saying that this impact fee needs to have a direct nexus and connection to the impacts that are occurring as a result of the development. Um, so basically saying limitation where the applicant for an oil and gas permit is also required to pay the road impact fee pursuant to 219020. Then only to the extent the road impact fee deprays the impact of the same capital facilities as those addressed by this section is determined by the director, may the applicant be excused only from the duplicative portion. So there's, there's two differences here. So there's the oil and gas impact fee that was passed last year, but there's also a road impact fee that applies to development in general. And the way and the language and how this is drafted essentially states that, um, we're not, we're not charging twice for the same impacts. So the impacts that are directly related to oil and gas, truck traffic that results from some of these sites. Um, and as you, as you may or may not remember, um, whether or not a facility uses pipelines, um, has a significant impact on truck traffic over the lifetime of the well. Um, so if they're doing, um, pipelines for produced water, oil and gas, um, that's a very different impact in, in terms of road impacts versus a site that's not utilizing pipelines. A site that's not utilizing pipelines will have probably 80 to 90% more truck traffic over the time of it, or the, over the life of the well. And that road impact fee is directly, um, representative of that instance. So it's staff's opinion and, and item here that this should be adequately covered based on this language. Um, but I'll, I'll open it up to Jason to, to kind of facilitate the rest of this discussion. Here I'm.
Thank you, Dominic. I think to Dominic's point, uh, I think the question or not necessarily, or a question or our position is that, uh, staff doesn't recommend or recommends no change because trapping impact fee is not duplicative of our own impact feeds. But to that, now we want to open it to the table. Does council wish to discuss this item more? So that we can move on to the next topic.
Is everybody good with moving on to the next topic or is there any discussion, uh, Councilman Hearst?
So a quick question. Um, do we actually keep, uh, a track in the accounting side of money collected? And what pot of money we put that back into? For instance, you take a road impact fee. Uh, you collect that fee. There's an administrative percentage that you take off of that. And then does it go straight to public works for, for paving projects or, or, um, it just goes straight into the general fund?
Uh, council member and, and city council, those are, uh, kept separate in a road impact fee fund. And in fact, the road impact fees have to be spent within the district that they are collected in. There are three districts across the northern range. So yes, they, they are accounted for and, uh, kept separate.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
Yes, thank you. This isn't a question, but Dylan, can you, um, try to see with someone in IT? I'm getting a lot of texts from constituents on the high definition channel 881. They can't hear anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen Thomas. I'll work with IT, uh, in the background on that issue. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Hearst?
That was it. Thank you.
Okay, I believe you can proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead, Dominic.
So the next item that was brought up is tax benefits. Um, there was one council member that wanted to have a discussion surrounding the tax benefits to the city and the residents, including adhoram and severance taxes. Um, as it pertains to tax beneficial or benefits, this discussion's not particularly germane to community developments, evaluation, review in the land development code, um, but may be evaluated, better evaluated by other city departments if necessary. Um, in terms of reviewing certain land uses, whether or not it's a commercial business or residences or that type of thing, it's not under the purview of the specifically the land development code or the community development department to conduct that type of analysis and, and view. Um, but I'll, I'll go ahead and defer to Jason to lead this discussion.
Thank you again. Uh, to that point, obviously, there's no necessary or recommended changes given once it gets outside the purview of the land development code. Obviously, we have a, a number of different provisions and we'll be talking about it later in regards to financial assurances as it pertains to oil and gas operators, uh, as it relates to what we can affect. Uh, obviously, if there's a need for conversations, either from a policy or a process standpoint with other departments, we can have that offline or at other, uh, at another study session. But our recommendation is to, that we satisfied this and that we move on to the next item.
Councilwoman Noble?
Do we look at the, um, costs as well? Not just the benefits, but the costs of, uh, this kind of land use?
If I may ask, uh, or can maybe give some better clarification, what are you defining as, as cost? Are you looking at the hard costs, soft costs of how they bring an application forward or bring a project to fruition, uh, just to help frame our thinking and response?
Um, there's a great deal of, uh, inspections going on, for example, in addition to the items that you just mentioned, uh, monitoring of air quality, et cetera. Uh, other costs regarding, um, health and so forth. Have we looked at the costs?
I will have to say that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dominic and or Matt Hader, we have not, what I think you're trying to get to have looked at a cost benefit analysis as it may pertain to the particular use on through all the different, uh, once again, hard costs, soft costs, health costs. Once again, that cost benefit analysis is outside of the purview of a land development code. Once again, we're looking at how it uses effectuated, um, physically on a piece of property and or is either, uh, permitted by right or by condition and subject to a variety of bulk dimensional and performance standards. Uh, not necessarily looking at the financial impact and basis, um, to the question that you bring forward. So that would be another conversation, once again, separate and apart from what is imported into the code for the evaluation of impacts to land, not necessarily what you bring up.
And to, to follow off of what Jason was saying, as it pertains to impacts of land and another way to think of this is what's contained within the land development code. Um, we do have provisions, obviously, um, in our draft regulations that talk about, um, the $86,000 per well requirement, um, for bonding and reclamation in certain instances like that where it's specifically tied to remedying, remediating an issue onsite. So going through and, and basically saying that, yes, we've looked at cost as it relates to remediation of land development codes, fines and fee or fines and, and that type of thing. Those are analysis that have been conducted, but in, in terms of an overall, um, net present value or any one of those types of economic analysis for this isn't under the purview of, uh, community development.
It would be interesting to see a summary on a per well basis. Thank you. Of the numbers that you have already developed. Thank you.
Councilwoman Grimes?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Dominic, for, um, starting out here with the presentation tonight. Appreciate all your work you've done here. Um, just wanted to kind of follow up on Councilwoman Noble's question about a cost analysis. And, and I, I realize it's outside of the purview of community development, but, um, whichever department it is appropriate for, uh, to take a look at that, maybe finance. Um, I think it's really critical to have kind of a, a quick sheet of the costs associated with developing, uh, oil and gas in Commerce City and what the operator is paying upfront, paying during operations, uh, as it relates to all the different things that Ms. Noble, uh, brought up, you know, a traffic impact fees, air quality inspections, and a lot of those things are covered by the operator. So I think it'd be really nice to see kind of a, you know, a, a quick cheat sheet, if you will, that shows all the costs that are being incurred and how they're being handled. And if it's by the city, uh, or the operator. And, and to expand on that, um, it would be nice, you know, year over year to see what those tax benefits are to the city and how that, how that plays out, uh, on the whole for the net, uh, net value, if you will.
Thank you, Councilmember Grimes. I think that, um, I have some others that I could add as well, so I'll provide that to them too. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Grimes, and obviously, we'll, we'll obviously take this matter back with inner city manager, uh, Mr. Tinklerberg and see how we can try to bring some of that information back to you in a, in another setting so that you can have that for your, for your thoughts and consideration and opinions and obviously comments. So thank you.
I would also add, I think it's important for that to be available to the residents, uh, potentially on the oil and gas site as, as those types of documents are prepared in the coming months and years.
Thank you.
If I may intervene for a second, uh, I believe that's going to take more than an hour of staff time. So I'll need to bring that to you in the next, at the next meeting for council direction.
Sounds good. Thanks, Roger.
As it pertains to any, um, policy.
I believe Dominic has frozen. Dominic.
I think Dominic is actually no longer part of the meeting, so if you want to proceed, please do.
Dominic, are you back in?
Yeah, I think I, I froze there for a second. All right. Okay, moving on. So regarding setbacks, one council member requested discussion on increasing the minimum setback to 2,000 feet with no a minimum 1,000 setback proposed. Um, a variety of local governments have proposed minimum setbacks, um, ranging anywhere from 500 feet to 2,000 feet, citing numerous health studies conducted on public health and safety as a basis in their decisions. Um, staff has provided a list of publication. The study session packet, which was included within the, um, previous council packets for the study session. Um, the one item that I specifically want to highlight is it pertains to the state willmaking process and setbacks. Um, the COGCC staff has currently proposed a minimum setback of 1,500 feet from 10 building units or one high. Has kept the minimum setback at 500 feet. Um, but there is additional language and differentiation, um, basically saying that there are circumstances where they're proposing to increase the minimum setback based on how many homes there are. Um, there have been some discussions and, um, some feedback that the city provided to the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission regarding how these setbacks come into play and if there's circumstances where, um, the COGCC could potentially re-review the city's approval or denial of an oil and gas permit, uh, because these minimum setbacks aren't in place. Could be something that, um, could happen and it's not clear based on the COGCC's latest, um, draft how that would play out. Um, so that, that did kind of highlight. So based on that, staff has proposed to revise 215266 to essentially adopt this.
Uh, I'm getting a message saying that our video feed is now down for the study session.
So, so Dominic, let's hit pause. Um, and.
Is it just the, or is it the high def and the normal video from channel eight?
Um, the, I think it's the link, uh, from, for the web based. The, the video feed. Let me, let me ask.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. It looks like the Granicus portal. The video center on the city's website, uh, is showing a network error.
Okay, this is Terry. Um, let me call, I already called on the, uh, um, volume issue. Um, I'm going to call back again on that as well. I'll keep you posted.
Mayor, I may, how would you like to handle the meeting until we get these IT issues resolved?
Let's take a 10 minute recess and try to get everybody to, uh, get up to speed on all the. IT issues, so.
Were we able to get that feed up and running?
Mayor Hughesman, it looks like the Granicus live feed is now operational again. For anyone that's watching on the HD channels, from my understanding is that the audio feed into the broadcast is somewhat lower than other channels, so making the volume louder might or should resolve that issue.
Okay, and this meeting is being recorded, correct?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. It is recorded and will be available to view by the public at a later date.
Very good. So if we lose the feed again, we can rely on recording being uploaded so that people can still watch the meeting.
That is 100% correct, yes.
Very good. Thank you. Please proceed with the meeting.
So, Mr. Mayor, at this time, our presenter Dominic Martinelli is having some connectivity issues despite the fact he's actually in the office. So he's trying to get back into the meeting again, so he's just paused for another minute and let him try to get back in, all right?
Shows him as having joined again, but
There he is.
All right, Rogers, I've been having some, I'm in the office here and I've been having some connectivity issues as well, so I'm going to go ahead and jump back into the presentation where we left off. Let me make sure. All right, there we go. Okay, so where we left off prior to the recess was regarding the setback provision. So I gave a little bit of a description as to what the problem statement was. One item that I do want to note for council as well that as we talk about setbacks in this specific topic, these setbacks are for new facilities in proximity to existing homes. So there's the existing setback and then the reverse setback. So as we have this discussion and we're talking about the the 1,000 foot setback from any existing residential or platted residential property, and then staff's proposed additional 1,500 foot setback from 10 or more existing residential or platted residential properties. This applies to a new planned oil and gas facility. The reverse setbacks is a separate topic I'll be covering later on in the presentation. That being said, I'll turn it over to Jason to provide any additional thoughts as it pertains to setbacks.
So, thank you, Don. So with that, obviously, staff's recommending going to 1,500 for 10 or plus more existing or platted residential. And obviously, as you stated with our 1,000 or plus for the rest, does council want to discuss this item or agree with the proposed modification?
Anybody wishing to discuss this? Councilwoman Noble?
Apparently, no one wants to go before me. Is that correct? All right. My recommendation, based on the science, was 2,000 feet. As a setback, CD P H E in their report was very clear on health impacts of less than 2,000 feet. We have the authority to set setbacks that are different than the COGCC sets and are stronger than the COGCC sets. That's due to passage and enactment of 181. If we feel the need to protect our residents and their health and safety, then I would recommend that we do more, and that would be 2,000 feet without exceptions.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, I would have to agree with Councilwoman Noble, you know, just for this health and safety of the residents. You know, I would rather go with 2,000, 2,000 as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hurst?
I'm okay with the 1,500 feet if that's the COGCC's new mandate. I was okay with 1,000 because COGCC is operating alongside CD P H E. If they really believe 2,000 feet was the minimum, they would have had to put that in.
Councilwoman Grimes?
Took the words out of my mouth, Councilmember Hurst. I think it's appropriate to draft these consistent with COGCC and their setbacks and would support keeping it at the 1,500 feet.
Mayor Protem?
I agree with Craig and Megan. I would rather keep it with what we have here.
Councilwoman Smith?
I agree. I think we should keep it at 1,500 and 1,000.
Councilwoman Wadiola?
Yeah, I think this is a good opportunity to really let our residents know that we do want to take their safety and health in consideration. So I think 2,000 would be fine with me. And, you know, I don't think, my question to you, Dominic, is or anybody, the 500 feet, how big of the, like, what could be there? I mean, it says outdoor venues, playgrounds. Is this for all oil fields? It'd be 1,500?
Yeah, I can weigh in there a little bit, Jose. So there's, there's a variety of different setbacks that apply, so kind of within this discussion, instead of a 181, there's the COGCC setbacks. And currently, as it stands today, if an operator was to submit a permit today, the minimum setback at the state level is 500 feet. Local governments have the ability to go above and beyond that. And within this proposal, the minimum setback from any number of residential units or any other criteria listed in the slide that you've seen here is 1,000 feet. In the instance, there's 10 or more homes within a 1,500 foot radius. Or anything that's defined as a high occupancy building unit, that could be a school, that could be a multifamily building, that could be a hospital, any sort of those larger, think of it as terms of public buildings or private buildings where there's large congregations of people. The COGCC in their latest draft in their mission change rulemaking has proposed that to be 1,500 feet from those instances. So based on that, that's what the city is proposing. So if there's a circumstance where there's five homes within 1,000 feet, the minimum setback is 1,000. But depending on the, the number of homes that are adjacent, that could potentially be increased as proposed in this language.
Okay, so, so I think again, you know, they left us to make that decision as a local control, and I think we could definitely really show 2,000 feet for me, just like anything else, you know? Different topics that they let little loopholes for us to make those decisions, and we have this opportunity right now to protect our, our residents. So I would be with 2,000.
Councilwoman Madera?
I'm okay with the 1,500 that's proposed.
I have hands that are still up. I don't know if this is a request to speak for a second time, but I'll go down the list. Councilwoman Noble?
It is. So are the colleagues, Grimes, Frank, Hurst, and Smith, saying that they want this changed from 1,000 feet to 1,500 feet, because that's what I'm hearing.
I'm happy with the COGCC. And, and I also think we're showing our residents that we care by sending 1,000 foot further back in the state mandate.
Councilwoman Grimes?
It was not my intent to say to increase to 1,500. I was speaking specifically about the high occupancy building units as defined by COGCC, 1,500 feet in that instance. And the 1,000 feet in other instances.
If I just ask on what basis people are choosing 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet, or what health and safety or science are you taking into consideration here?
I think as much science as is put into the 2,000 foot setback, it's really an arbitrary number in both instances.
I don't believe it's arbitrary. The CD P H E put out a study, as you well know, at the end of last year for 15, and it's at 2,000 feet.
And several people have come out and shown that there's flaws and variances to that study depending on types of climate and wind. Everything that's going on at that time during the study could be challenged every single time. So 2,000 feet's an arbitrary number still.
Mayor Protemfrin?
I was in agreement with what we had on the slide. I feel like they've put a lot of research into that. I feel like they've followed COGCC. So I was in agreement with what is currently on the slide.
So if I may, Mayor, respectfully put this on the, on the table, what I currently understand is that the majority of council is in favor or in support of the proposed modifications that you see on your slide.
That's the way I heard it.
Obviously, unless there is a desire for one of those in which it's in the majority, I would say that that's what we would move forward with staff. If there's any further discussion, obviously, we're more than willing to do so, but I think our, our direction is clear on what we heard on this topic and I'm from the majority of the group.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address this directly to the residents of Turnberry. The Antelope site is within this range, and so it would be built near the residence of Turnberry as it currently stands on the basis of using the 1,000 foot.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address an additional side. We still would have to approve the CUP for that site to be built. So there would still be a long approval process with public hearings before that would ever get started.
Mr. Rogers, do you know off the top of your head how many homes would be affected by the Antelope site and whether it would fall under the 1,000 or 1,500 foot restriction?
We do have that number. I do not have it off the top of my head. Dominic, you may, you may be able to pull the numbers that we looked at previously with the buffer requirements and are looking at that during the process.
So I know that. We hadn't gone and like actually calculated a specific number of units. But we do have on the oil and gas interactive map that's on the website. It does take into that analysis and you can look at the number of homes that are within that to determine how many there are. That is something that we can look into relatively quickly here to get an answer. But yes, there are, there are homes within that, that range that was defined.
Majority of council has spoken, so please move forward.
Thanks, sir.
So the next item that we have to discuss are financial assurances. There was one council member in the feedback provided to staff wanted a discussion on financial assurances and that no self-insurance should be allowed and the amount of bonding would be equal or greater to the cost of site reclamation. The current draft would not allow for self-insurance to satisfy Articles Five and B and P H requirements. The current draft mandates a minimum bond requirement of $86,000 per well based on a COGCC report that assessed the potential financial impacts of a well and associated costs necessary to conduct site reclamation activities in the event of a financial setback by an operator. So that $86,000 per well is scalable based on, so if we're talking about on a per pad basis, some proposed operations might be a 12 pads or a 12 well site. Others might be a 24 well site. So this $86,000 per well would be applied based on the number of wells on that site and is generally enough to cover any site reclamation activities in the event of a financial, in the event of a financial setback by an operator. That being said, I'll turn it over to Director Rogers for any additional thoughts and considerations.
So the current draft actually includes that bond for eighty-six thousand. And once again, with the relative information that we have from COGCC and the cost of the site reclamation in the event of a financial setback and does not permit self-insurance. We believe we have covered this matter. However, if council does wish to discuss this matter in greater detail, I would invite that conversation.
Well, we have a, a discussion on this. I'd like to know, is there a maximum cap on that eighty-six thousand dollar bond requirement? I think that previously you could be required to bond eighty-six thousand dollars per well up to five wells, and then that's all you had to do. So is there a cap or is this a tried and true figure of eighty-six thousand dollars per well, no matter how many wells you have? As we understand the draft, there's no cap. So if there's thirty-two wells, that would be eighty-six thousand times thirty-two. It doesn't taper off at a certain threshold. Thank you for that clarification. Is council good with this, or do you want to continue and have a discussion regarding it? Councilwoman Grimes.
I would just comment that if you do the math on that, that's well over two million dollars, which is a lot of money and well beyond what's needed to cover site reclamation for any size pad, even a thirty-two well pad. And so would, would like to see a consideration made for some sort of cap. Two, two million dollars is a huge number for site reclamation.
Councilwoman Madera.
Now, given that last night, there was a presentation that came before us by RTD that required five million dollars for a piece of art, you know, eighty-six thousand dollars a well seems a little low. So is there, have we done any studies on reclamation costs and what those would be? For well?
So, so if I may, as, as Dominic indicated, this was based on COC, COGCC report of those costs. And again, this is a bond requirement. We're not requiring that someone pay this money cash down for us to hold in the event of a financial setback. This is just a bonding requirement. So typically they go out to a bond and whoever has to, the operator, they only have to have, you know, a portion of that that they'd actually be, be paying for depending on their own credit and, and things of that nature and their relationship with their bank.
Right. But so I guess my concern is, you know, if we are stuck putting the bill to with some wells that we either need to plug or, you know, for whatever reason, something happens to the operator, will this be sufficient to cover those costs?
We believe it will, it will be. And that's why we've gone with this number in our recommendation. But that's also why we've also, you know, we, we haven't proposed a cap either. Because we, you know, if we don't want to end up being stuck with costs that, that exceed what was made available to us through that bond.
And this is per well, not well pads, right?
Per well, yes. So essentially the way that it's structured is the eighty, eighty-six thousand dollars per well. Scaling it up is enough to cover the specific impacts as it pertains to the number of wells on a site. But also there's going to be kind of thinking about fixed versus variable. So there's going to be fixed reclamation activities that need to occur on the well site, but also variable based on the number of wells. This eighty-six thousand dollar well figure is based on that, or a widely cited COGCC study that evaluated these detail and criteria in pretty significant detail. I'm not privy to those details in as much detail as Matt Suris. So I'm going to let him sort of weigh in here and to what that study conducted.
Yeah, happy to. That was a, a study that was conducted in twenty seventeen, I believe. Although I can put my hands on that and send that to you. And it really looked at a broad range of areas, both in rural Weld County as well as those facilities that are closer to human habitation, human, you know, homes and, and parks and whatnot. So it was an average cost and it included both the plugging and abandonment, includes cementing as is required by Coal and Gas Conservation Commission in current regulations and also reclaiming those sites to their previous condition. And that, that average was eighty-two, eighty-two thousand five hundred. We have already adjusted for inflation to eighty-six thousand.
Thank you. I'm okay with the eighty-six thousand per well.
So you bring up a, a good word there, inflation. And looking at the lifespan of how far out this whole project could potentially go, I'm actually concerned that eighty-six thousand dollars will not cover us into the future through the life of the project. So I'd like to see that actually increased based on how much you increased last time, doubling that over again and making it an even ninety thousand dollars would be my recommendation of what we do for this. Councilwoman Noble.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I could support that ninety thousand, but I have a question about the bonding. So we're aware of several companies that have gone, that are in the process of going bankrupt or have gone bankrupt. How do these bonds work when they are bankrupt? Do we become a creditor? Or do we automatically get paid by these bonds?
So the, the bond would exist, is, is held by whoever the, the issuer is, and we would call on the bond directly. So as far as I understand, a bankruptcy proceeding, that would not be something that we would, we wouldn't be subject to that. We'd be calling directly on that bond. We're the only one that has a right to that bond. There wouldn't be other creditors that could be coming after that. And of course, the, the operator would have paid for the bond, you know, it's basically like a form of insurance, if you will. You know, so it's, we're calling on that after they paid a portion of it.
One item I'd like to jump in for this discussion, responding to the mayor's comment. It stated, talking about it, the inflation, there are provisions within the land development code that, like thinking, for instance, for the water acquisition fee where the amount of that fee is adjusted annually for inflation. Would you like to proceed forward and kind of having this discussion at that ninety thousand dollar level? Or would you potentially consider adding the additional language, basically saying a minimum bond requirement of eighty-six thousand dollars per well, adjusted annually for inflation starting in twenty twenty?
And if that was the case, I think this, the recommendation staff would make, or at least I would make, if we've done some other instances, is basically tie that to the, the CPI for the, the greater Denver metro area. That's something you'll see. And I think you saw it in the weeds ordinance that addressed fines and penalties. So we just, we stick with the same type of language and escalator that, that basically the state uses and we could use as well and have used and proposed in some other areas.
So my issue with the way that you've put that is, that's great. Next year, whenever you put your bond money in, you have to go with the CPI increase. The problem is, is an operator today who puts that bond, bond money into a lockbox. Then five years from now, whenever we have to do reclamation, that money is not enough. Even though the CPI went up every year, they still locked it in at the lower rate today. So my issue wouldn't be solved without. What I would like to see is if we're looking at a project that is potentially going to take five years from start to finish, we figure out what that cost projection would be for inflation for the next five years, and that's what needs to be put in the lockbox today. Next year, figure it out again for the next five years, and that's what gets put in lockbox. That way, we're making sure that there is adequate money whenever that time comes that we have to rely on those bonds in order to take care of the issue. Councilman Madera.
Sorry, I still have my hand up. But in regards to that, so the way that reclamation works, when the company enters into a project, they'll record a liability. They'll forecast all those costs for the life of the, the project, and then they'll discount it back. So it's not necessarily that the bond's going to cover that entire amount. The company itself is still on the hook for the total cost of reclamation. But the bonds are, you know, more of assurance for the city during this time. So you're not going to find any industry really that has to deal with reclamation where the entire cost of the ARO is going to be bonded, but they are on the hook for that total amount.
Councilwoman Grimes.
I just wanted to mention also that there's additional bonding requirements at the COGCC level. So this isn't something that would be handled solely by Commerce City or any city for that matter. There's additional financial assurances in place at the state level to handle situations just like this.
Any other council members wishing to discuss this? We need to give direction to staff on how to proceed. Mayor Protem, what's your opinion?
I would be willing to go up to the ninety thousand for now on, I guess, just leave it.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. I'm in agreement, Mayor, with you up to increase it to ninety thousand. And other council members that agree with the ninety thousand. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wadiola.
I'm good with the ninety thousand, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith.
I agree with ninety thousand.
Thank you, Councilman Ernst.
May I ask just a clarification to this discussion? If something were to happen that we're dependent on these bond payouts, what is that situation? What are, what are we hoping to fix? Are we hoping to bring in a new a new company to, to finish the?
Okay.
Dominic.
So there was a request to discuss BMPs generally, recommending ensuring that language includes no standards less than the revised LDC or COGCC rules. The ability of the city to oppose that COGCC hearing or bring a lawsuit. No transferability, no vested rights, removal of legal room language such as wherever practical or finally, or financially feasible or maximum step practical. Expectation for most recent and safest equipment and technology. And it was also recommended in this specific comment that council further consider a moratorium until the LDC is updated. One council member recommended removing all language the same or similar to wherever practicable or financially feasible, maximum, maximum step practicable. Staff believes that they made efforts to remove instances of the language above as it pertains to wherever practical, financially feasible or maximum extent practicable within the land development code. There might be some instances where this appeared within the regional operator agreement. But if there are instances where this may still exist within the BMP document as proposed, please let us know. So that being said, I'll turn it over to Jason for any other additional thoughts and discussion until he leave the facilitation.
That being said, staff is obviously recommending including the BMPs as proposed in the current draft. If there, if there is a desire or a discussion to discuss what was proposed by the council member as it related to some of the other recommended language, obviously, we invite that conversation. But it is, it is a staff's position that we promote what we have proposed in our draft.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Mr. Rogers, will you just clarify? So you're saying the draft has already been changed to, to remove all of those items in quotes?
So our best understanding is we've gone through that, that document we have gone through and we have believed to capture everywhere, wherever practical, financially feasible, maximum step practicable from our public draft. There may be an instance, and once again, we're going to continue to keep going through our draft as this advances to the planning commission and city council public hearing to ensure that we have captured all. But it is our intent to, and we believe we have done so. I would say as far as the BMP discussion, right, we propose what we believe to have captured the, what's the key points, the most important as, as discussed with council up to this point and are not recommending any additional changes to what you, what, what you have before you.
I would have to disagree completely with the, the removal of all of those types of language. I think that that provides for a de facto ban on development. There are instances where things are not practical. And financially feasible generally relates to the economics of a project, right? And so I think, you know, availability of equipment, if it's not available, how can you use it? Just think, you know, things like that. I don't see where taking these things out is productive.
So if I may just qualify, obviously, we've taken that language out. You're making the recommendation of adding that language back in.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Noble.
I'm in support of the decision that you made to remove this language. It has been unfortunately misused so that lesser quality equipment, less safe equipment, less healthy equipment is, is brought in. Could we go back a slide? Please? Thanks. Oh, okay. This is the one I'm curious about. Currently, the ROA doesn't allow for the city to oppose the applicant at a COGCC hearing or to bring lawsuit. And I wonder about future city councils who might have a different attitude or a different position. And they aren't able to do anything about it because their ability to do so was written out by a previous council.
Councilmember Noble, are you asking about the ROA or the BNP's in the proposed land development code update?
Well, either way.
Okay, so with respect to the ROA, that would be a bigger, outside the scope question worthy of addressing that we would need to come back with you on. I don't believe that that term is, because it's not a negotiated document, is not in these BNP's. And Mr. Hader or Mr. Martinelli, please correct me if I'm wrong. That limitation of the ability to oppose the COGCC, I don't believe that's included in the draft before you and should not be. In the ROA, it is limited only in the event of strict compliance with the ROA by the operator. There are a few other items on this list that were negotiated in the ROA, but I don't believe that are continued. And I believe staff went through in great detail to try and take out negotiated terms. That would not have been, that should not have been imposed in a code regime. So I hope that helps and please clarify if I'm incorrect.
One other item I'd like to add on to the end of that statement, City Attorney Sheed easily is, so that provision has obviously been removed from the current LDC draft. And given that, once these regulations are adopted, there would not ideally be a need to establish or institute additional regional operator agreements or anything of that nature. This isn't something that the city anticipates would be continuing practice or put into place for future operators.
Okay, thank you, Dominic. Then what about most recent and safest equipment and technology? I know Broomfield ran into a big problem with that. And if, if, if an operator is in financial straits, for example, they might turn to lesser equipment and technology in order to do the job that they need to do. Or that is to subcontractors they hire and how they pay them wind up using lesser equipment and technology. Is there any way that we can ensure in this that basically the latest and greatest, the safest, is what is used in Commerce City?
So I'll respond to that with a couple considerations. I think the first one is kind of the understanding of the nature of this BNP document and how it's intended to be applied. So the intent of this is something that will be updated annually by council. So there will be discussions, there would be recommendations brought forward by staff as to what that new technology is that could reasonably incorporate at this time. And then council could vote to include that within the new best management practices document. Another thing to consider here as well, and as you go through Exhibit I of the BNP document, where we talk about wherever practical or financially feasible or maximum extent practicable, that language should not be applied to something that theoretically doesn't have some sort of limitation. And let me give you an example of that. So we talk about if there's language in the best management practices document that says, remove dust from the site to the maximum extent practicable. If it said, remove all dust, that's a level of threshold and quantifiable measurement to, relatively impossible to say that all dust that exists has been removed from the site. So in an instance, that's what the intent of that language, where it still exists in the draft, to essentially cover that. So there are where we say those types of instances where we're talking about very minute measurement and trying to control something to the greatest extent reasonably possible.
Okay, thanks.
That's what the intent of that language is. It's not to provide exemptions from mitigating dust or any of that. It's basically saying that there's a limitation in a quantifiable threshold that you have to kind of draw the lines.
I just wanted to touch back on the comment about the ability of the city to oppose at a COGCC hearing. And I believe Dominic or Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but the intent there is because local approval is required. See, presumably if we approved a permit in Commerce City, it would be unfair to then contest that same permit at the COGCC.
So part of this I'm going to rely on coming from obviously us granting a permit at the local level and ultimately what may be submitted at the state level, so.
So we don't have anything that prohibits us from opposing something at the state level in the code provisions that you've been asked to review and approve. We wouldn't do something where we wouldn't write law where we're limiting what we can legally do and putting those kinds of restrictions on ourselves. Presumably, as you point out, Councilmember Grimes, we wouldn't have any reason to oppose something if it were to, after we've already approved it. It wouldn't make a lot of sense to do that unless, you know, I can't imagine what those circumstances would be. But we're not going to propose laws in which we tie our own hands and limit our own authority to, you know, to carry out our obligations.
I think, Matt, I think where you're going with that is that if we, if we approve permit A at the local level, but a permit B was submitted at the state level that didn't capture by condition and/or what we stated as some of the bulk dimensional or performance standards for set gas and oil well pad, oil well pad site, we would then obviously have some level of objection that we would bring forward, given that there's not a concurrence with our approval off the local level.
Expect that consistency to appear. Does that satisfy, is that what you're looking for, Councilmember Grimes?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't, there wasn't an intent to have the ability to oppose something that the city's already approved. That's all I wanted clarification on. And, you know, further, the COGCC is looking to local authorities for what their metrics are, right? And so don't have the approval of a city, the COGCC is not going to approve a permit at their level.
Right. And just so you have the declarative statement, there is no such intent here.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I just, I do agree with the removal of the wiggle room language in those places outside of where you were talking about, like the example that Dominic used with the dust. I do agree with taking that out. So I don't know if that's where we're going. I pretty much agree with all of the additional language that's on this BMP slide.
Councilwoman Noble.
I do think that there can be a case and there would be potentially a case if something was approved, let's say, next year, and there was an election in November, and then there was a new council seated in December. There's always an opportunity for things to change. That's the whole point of elections. We certainly saw that happen in Broomfield, for example, that had one kind of city council two years ago and has a quite different city council this year. So I don't want the explanation from our legal counsel to narrow it so directly that it would be only if the COGCC wasn't necessarily giving us entirely what we wanted. There can be other opportunities going ahead because we don't know. And it could be different in 10 years. Maybe suddenly we're all on nuclear energy or something and they want to do a change. We shouldn't ever tie anyone's hands in any case.
So, so, so Matt, maybe you're about to tackle this, but I was going to ask to, once we grant an approval or an action to a permit, what are we held to legally and under the land development code as it relates to the application of rules and regulations?
So, Kim, sorry, can you repeat that?
Can you walk us through that? Once we grant an action for approval of an oil and gas permit, what are we, what are we accountable for subject to the rules and regulations under the land development code and how those are applied forward?
Right, so once that permit is approved, that permit holder has those rights under that permit. And the only way we could modify those rights is through the legal modification process, petition process, really, which requires notice and a hearing and everything of that nature, all due process rights required, but would be doing it for some sort of reason that was material to the representation they made in their application. In other words, something is being approved in error or approved on incorrect information. Trying to address Councilmember Noble's concern, what I want to be very clear with is that we're not trying to be deceptive in some way as to what our rights are. We are, we're not putting anything in this. I mean, there's nothing in the code about this. So I'm, it's a little, I feel like we're kind of going down a rabbit hole. There's nothing in, in, in the LDC and oil, gas in which we're tying our own hands. But at the same time, we have, there's nothing in here that shows where we had some sort of intent to be able to say, go back later and pull the carpet from under somebody who we've given a permit to without any basis to do so. So if we learn of something, if there's been a material misrepresentation in a, in a application or something of that nature, then we would address that as our code provides and allows us to do. I hope that's what you're looking for, Councilmember Noble.
All right, thank you. And I would like to also thank Mayor Protem Frank. I think I would agree with her that the things on this slide I would support as well.
And if I may, to just supplement what Mr. Hader said, just so everyone is clear, the COGCC and the city's regulations are separate. And the city would not submit a fraudulent opposition to a COGCC application. However, if there was something under the COGCC regulation, independent of the city's regulations, and there was a factual basis and a legal basis to make a claim, the city could assert that. And there's no restriction in the LDC to that, I believe, is what Mr. Hader was saying. But I want to make that clear that they are, they are separate regulatory structures. And your legal counsel would not be involved in the filing of any claim that didn't have a fact, separate factual or legal basis as well. So those things would be treated completely separately.
Thank you. And in furtherance of this, I want to take a quick minute just to make sure that everybody's clear with what's on the table as it relates to questions and/or direction. The first question, does council want to modify language about feasibility and practicality, practicality? Ultimately, at the same time, there was this discussion about the BNP's that are currently shown on the slide at hand. Those BNP's, as you see within the second point, have not been included in the proposed draft that you have before you as far as the March 10 draft and the revisions that we also provided to you on June 8. So the question there that I've heard as well is, do we want to include these BNP's as you see on the screen to what we already have provided to you as well? So two, two different questions. With the question about removal of wiggle room or practicality, the practicality or feasibility of certain language, I believe the majority has said to look at the removal of that wiggle room language. And I believe that is clear for us as staff. The other question on hand, once again, is the inclusion of these additional BNP's and whether or not there is a level of concurrence across all of council.
All right, Councilwoman Noble, your hand is up.
I was just following what Mayor Protem Frank said. And yes, I think that the things on this slide, other than how you have clarified, should be included. We have had discussion of some of it already, in fact, on other issues, on other issues that came before us last time. So that's what I'm suggesting. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Grimes.
I believe I've already stated my position on the wiggle room piece. The rest of these bullet points, I have some concerns about. I would like it if someone, Mr. Hader or Mr. Sheedley, whoever's appropriate, could speak to vested rights and transferability. My understanding is there are some legal obligations and legal liabilities to taking away vested rights.
I would just like to ask Mr. Rogers to confirm, it was my understanding reviewing this slide, that these provisions were suggestions from a council member and not necessarily something staff was recommending.
That is correct. So after.
It's covered in the code, vested rights is a concept under the land development code that is addressed only for specific types of applications, oil and gas permits not among them. And so there's a concept of common law vested rights and of statutorily recognized vested rights. And I don't believe we can waive the common law concept of vested rights that once a permit is issued, that that would be included. And so we could not do that through the code or the BMP specifically. And I don't believe any of the amendments, and Matt, please correct me if I'm wrong, include oil and gas permits as an item that would be subject to vested rights, independent of that common law doctrine. And so I, I thought the only thing for discussion was really the, the question of removing the practicality language and feasibility language where practicable. Whereas everything else was already established in the code. And that staff's recommendation was to not do anything. Okay. Thank you. So also, Ms. Grimes, I hope that that answers your question, that we could not do anything. Or if we were to include this language, it would be inconsistent with the rest of the land development code, I believe.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Okay, so if that, with that being said, I mean, then I, then I at least agree with the removal of the wiggle room language. If that's, if that's okay, I mean, if everything else is not really a suggestion, that's fine, but I definitely would like the wiggle room language out.
Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, so I agree with Mayor Protem with the removal of the wiggle room. As far as these other ones, I think we should keep it in. I'm not familiar with the exact language on the transferability. I would like there to be maybe a. I would like there to be maybe a counter review at the time of transfer. But other than that, I think it's necessary, you know, if there's a company that's going out of business, that's a legitimate concern. Most of the time they sell off their properties and they'll have another operator come in and we want to make that as seamless as possible because you know, that's, we don't want unattended wells. We want wells being taken care of and safe for our residents.
So just to weigh in and follow up with the statement you made. So transferability is addressed elsewhere in the study session presentation. If you remember, on June 22, we did discuss transferability briefly. So I think just for the purposes of the discussion, if we can separate transferability and vested rights, those are all not specific to this. And just as a reminder on this, so staff's recommended changes based on this comment were no proposed changes. And I think kind of using the example that we provided on removal of language such as wherever, wherever practicable or financially feasible or maximum extent practicable, that was staff's intent for that section. So as you guys continue this discussion, that, that, that can be the intent of staff to go back through that BMP document one more time and ensure unnecessary instances of that language is removed.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
I'm kind of, you know, in more agreement with Mayor Procham to, you know, remove the wiggle room. You know, I'm kind of in agreement on that aspect. But other than that, you know, I would agree with the other recommendations. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wadiola.
I'm, I'm with what staff recommends on this one and the rest of the council on the wiggle room and.
Councilman Hearst.
Yeah, I'm fairly aligned with staff recommendation, you know. I, I, I trust that, you know, we're, we're all having the conversation of sometimes this wiggle room actually benefits us. And when I say that is, we, we talk about, you know, air quality monitoring and its infancy stages of development. Give us the wiggle room to continue to advance that technology as it becomes available to require those advancements. So as, as Mr. Sheasley said, where applicable, makes sense to me. There are, I, I think there are some situations, and of course, I can't read through all of them right now, sitting here to, to highlight them, but I, I think there are some situations in there that actually may benefit us. And so as long as we leave those in there and our, our forward thinking in that sense, I, I agree with the staff recommendations.
Councilwoman Smith.
I'd agree with staff in removing the wiggle room where, where you can.
Thank you. Staff, you have your direction.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on to the next slide here. So one council member requested discussion of geohazard risks. The, the second bullet point here is the specific comment that was received from the, the council member. While the 1600 plus earthquakes in our area were due to injection well and all the language listed below, recommend requiring seismic levels that exceed 1.0 result in the shutdown of drilling or completion. Recommend that operator shows that horizontal drilling will intersect with, with a fault line during the permit application process. And then there are some additional comments from that council member regarding ground subsidence. So based on that, we'll have a further discussion and I can turn it over to Jason Rogers here now to sort of facilitate that.
So at this point in time, it's not currently addressed and staff recommends that these issues be addressed at the state level. So with that, if there's any further need to discuss that, but obviously we believe the state is more appropriate to address and handle these, these regulations and standards in place than at the local level.
So before we have discussion, just to clarify, you're recommending that we don't take any action on seismic and that it only be dealt with at the state level?
That is correct.
Uh, Councilwoman Smith.
I'm sorry, my hand is up from the last time, but I agree. I think we should just let state handle it.
Thank you, Councilman Hearst.
Yeah, I believe seismic activity would be below ground and we do not have the authority to regulate below ground.
Councilwoman Noble.
My problem is, is that if we don't have any code regarding this, then how do we control it? It has been demonstrated now that it's not strictly due to injection wells. And we know that this area has ground subsidence issues as well because of the bentonite soil. I would, I really want to be able to find some solution to this because I do think it is a considerable problem due to the number of wells that are proposed to be drilled under our homes in North Commerce City. These could extend two to three miles, at least according to some of the changes for where you're moving, where you have proposed to move some of the sites, but their intentions are to go to at least to the same point that they had planned. I just don't see how it makes sense for us not to take a position on this at all. We need to be able to say that this is not acceptable in Commerce City. If we have any kind of quake disturbances again or ground subsidence.
Mayor Procham.
I would prefer to, to follow Jason's suggestion on this and not add this or move forward with this.
Councilman Hearst.
Councilwoman Noble, I do want to make it clear that, that I too would be not okay with i- if, if horizontal drilling caused a landslide or a a sinkhole or something that caused a house to fall in. And then obviously there would be lots of finger pointing on who's going to, who's to blame. And, and the finger pointing would come from insurance companies and so on and so forth. The problem I have is we start, if we start to get into this type of regulatory world, that I'm not sure we have authority to do so, but if we get into this regulatory world, we then have to start establishing who's going to pay for the geologist, if you will, to be able to decide what caused the earthquake, that it was solely the, the drilling company was solely responsible for that. Is it, you know, due to past operations from 100 years ago on the site that, that led to this? There's going to be a lot of finger pointing in that situation. And in, in my opinion, that's best handled at the state, at the COGCC level through their regulatory ability.
Councilman Wadiola.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I just think it's better, I don't think we have the ability to do that. And it'd be better at the state level.
Councilman Hearst, your hand is up again.
Yeah, I apologize. I thought it sometimes doesn't cancel out once you get called on.
Is there anybody else that I haven't sought opinion from? Councilwoman Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Would also agree that this is best handled at the state level.
Your staff, you have your direction. Hold on, Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I agree with the state level, but I just was kind of confused, Jason, on the part where it says recommend requiring the seismic levels that exceed that this would, would Commerce City staff be monitoring that continuously as well, or is that just at the state level? If that makes sense.
Which bullet point are you, are you speaking to?
Yeah, we're, like it says, recommending that if it is, if it exceeds 1.0 result in the shutdown of drilling, would that be city staff ongoing monitoring that, or is that the state level?
So this is what was proposed by the council member that we should look at, including at or within our, within our Land Development Code. What we are stating is that, once again, the state is better equipped to be able to address geo hazards and what they believe is the most appropriate regulatory approach to geo hazards, if deemed, if deemed appropriate. So we simply wanted to present you with the information. We're not recommending that. Okay, we're taking the position that the state is better equipped. To deal with those aspects.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and I would agree that, you know, with this, with your recommendations and staff recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Do you have your direction?
Yes, sir.
So cumulative impacts, there was one council member that requested modifying the definition of cumulative impacts. And basically what that, that states is that cumulative impact shall mean the effects of an action or easily anticipated activity that are added or interact with other effects in Commerce City or its planning area in the reasonable foreseeable future. And just of a clarification on that, this language is proposed by the council member. All baseline studies should be overseen by city and conducted at operator's expense. Staff does acknowledge the need for operators to provide some form of assessments of how a particular well site will contribute to regional impacts. The challenge here is that may be difficult at a local government scale to effectively measure, assess and quantify the data it receives. And staff believes that entities such as the Regional Air Quality Council, the Air Pollution Control Division and state government in general are best staffed and equipped to determine baseline thresholds and measurement for this data. And to that point, there is a number of rule makings that are going on at the moment, addressing this specific item. The Air Quality Control Commission is currently in the process of going through a rulemaking, a hearing seven, which is tasked with dealing with other quality issues, but also looking from a regional and perspective, how do you address these types of regional air quality issues? The COGCC is sort of grappling with that at the moment. And the area that it becomes a little bit tricky for local governments is the, the type of staff required to conduct that. I, I, I know there have been some conversations about that potentially. But as far as that goes, there are already a number of environmental scientists and folks at the state level that are able to, number one, say, what is, what are baseline thresholds and looking outside of the Commerce, Commerce City jurisdictional boundaries to develop those things, looking at EPA baselines and a number of other things to number one, determine what, what is a cumulative, cumulative impact? Number two, what's the, the scientific threshold where there may be some sort of exceedance that is impactful in human health? And then the whole picture of how that, how that comes into play with multiple well sites and the overall cumulative development in the the Denver-Jewelsburg Basin. So that being said, staff does acknowledge that this is an issue that we, we, we saw pretty significantly in depth through our public comment period that was hosted. So what we're, what we're kind of looking at here and we're, we're in a position where the current COGCC staff or the COGCC draft does not have enough guidance as to what cumulative impacts assessment and measurement is going to look like. So it's a little bit difficult at this point in time to be able to reasonably state that there's a list of requirements that would need to be put in place. But what we're proposing is within the definition section is to include a definition that states that cumulative impact shall mean the effects of an action that are added to or interact with other effects of a particular place and with a particular time. Cumulative impacts take into account all disturbances and cumulative impacts result in the compounding of the effects of all actions over time. A cumulative impact of an action can be viewed as the total effects on a resource ecosystem or human community. Excuse me, of that action and all their activities affecting that resource. There's also a proposed addition to the application requirements where we're modifying, we're adding, proposing to modify the air quality mitigation plan showing a modeling assessment of cumulative air quality impacts in a plan and schedule to maintain air quality, including a man, a plan to minimize bottle organic compounds, emissions and compliance with the BMP document. And then also proposed modifications, the air quality standards and monitorings, basically saying that air quality mitigation plan must consider the cumulative impacts of existing air quality in all planned and existing oil and gas operations within Monlil the city. The plan will describe what the operator will eliminate capture and all the language below that. So what we're, what we're saying right now is based on this and how we propose language and acknowledging that the, the public has commented on this, providing some, some mechanism to essentially require the operator to state in their application how they believe their site mayor may not be contributing to overall cumulative impacts in the area. So within that, there's also an additional proposed language for BMP F6, which states that the operator shall conduct a baseline noise mitigation study to ascertain baseline and expected cumulative noise levels at each well site. And then as part of this discussion and kind of to get you all thinking, there's a very useful definition under the California Environmental Quality Act, which is one of the instances at the, at a state where there is some sort of policy that really gets into depth on these types of issues. So they, they essentially define it as two or more individual effects when considered together are considerable or which can compound or increase other environmental impacts. So that being said, I'm going to take us back to this slide here. And just to be clear, this, this language shown is what staff is proposing to modify to the existing draft based on well as public feedback.
So to that, obviously, we've recommended a new definition of cumulative impacts that affects application requirements, air quality standards monitoring, noisy noise mitigation. To that, we believe we, we've, I think, have been able to take away the key points and important aspects, not only from the community, but also what we've heard in our interactions with council during study session. And this is what we would like and recommend to move forward. We will obviously invite any conversation from, from council and support. Or if they would like any additional modification or not to even, or not to change the definition as we have proposed.
So in order to make this a little bit easier, each of you have a number next to your name. We'll go down the line from two through nine. State your opinion on what you want to do with the language being proposed by staff.
So I guess I'll start, I'm in agreement with the changes proposed from staff.
I'm also in agreement with staff's proposal.
I'm also in agreement also with staff's proposal.
I am as well.
Me too. I'm good with staff's proposal.
I'm finishing reading. You guys, just give me for a second.
I'm fine with most of the the language here. I have a couple of questions related to the air quality mitigation plan requirements. And I'm curious how we can ask for a cumulative air quality impact assessment if we have operators, multiple operators applying for applications at different times in different parts of the city, how do you how do you quantify a cumulative impact in that instance? And to that end, a development plan that doesn't address, you know, the example that we have is the extraction permits. And those were, you know, we knew what the plan was for the region all at once, but that not isn't necessarily going to be the case in every instance. And depending on how this plays out with extraction, these permits could be re-applied for by different operators at different times. And so just would like some feedback on how you model and assess a cumulative air quality impact when we might be talking about one one pad at a time.
Certainly. I think the when I when I see these comments, I'm I'm saying them under the the consideration that, again, we really are waiting to see how the state responds to this. This was a mandate within Senate law one eighty-one to consider the cumulative impacts of oil and gas development. We're really, really going to just see how that plays out. But I think in terms of answering your specific question, I think once staff receives an application, they're really only going to be able to evaluate the information that exists on hand at that point. So let's say that there's been a round of oil and gas permits that are applied for. And let's say you're applying for the fourth or the fifth oil and gas permit in the city. You could potentially be able to estimate based on how many wells are within the city, what expected air quality impacts could be within a reasonable range. We're not, I don't think that we're looking for this is the exact VOCs on a certain day. It's all in 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 exact science. Things vary based on baseline conditions. But give us your best guess as to what you think the conditions are now based on scientific reasoning and studies and any other supplemental information you can provide. And then explain what the delta is based on your proposed operation. How will your individual well pad or well pads impact? When we're talking about this, we're talking about air quality specifically. Staff did not recommend making any changes that pertains to lighting and traffic and a number of other provisions. Because if you if you look at kind of this, part of the question is how do you define region? And when we look at traffic studies and we look at lighting plans, there is enough information, the application materials and requirements already that we can get a traffic control plan study from an operator and be able to apply that to existing annual average daily traffic counts and other lighting plans that we have to be able to pull the pieces of the picture together. Part of it, especially with like noise or like with odor or something along those lines, how do you how do you quantify regional odor? Those are all really tough questions to ask and kind of difficult to pinpoint down. But as 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 it pertains to noise and to air quality, we do think that there are some ways that basically saying, all right, to the operator, show us what you think here. What how do you believe that this will be increasing? And there are some other things that the state needs to resolve in terms of bills that have been passed. There's House Bill twelve sixty-one, which was passed last year, which requires the state to develop an overall action plan as to reducing greenhouse gas emissions over a period of time. How do your plant operations fall within those those requirements, a number of other things. But when we look at this and in terms of what what we reasonably could put in the code today, I think this is the best that we we have.
Thank you for that, Dominic. I would just ask then that staff is would consider adding some language here to quantify what those requirements might look like. Just asking for a modeling assessment of cumulative air quality is a fairly subjective ask. And to your point, you know, it depends on what's happening in the city at the time and how many wells have been drilled, et cetera. I think it's important to identify what you're looking for, what you're asking for from the applicant.
Yeah, and I I I certainly acknowledge that and staff certainly acknowledges that 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 makes sense and applies. And I I think we'll have to see how the state goes with that. But I think putting some very basic general requirements to give an operator's a little bit of an idea. I think when we think about this and when an operator eventually comes to us and looks at our new regulations, there I think there's there's going to be a pause, and I think there'll be an opportunity for the operator to meet with the city and talk about what that looks like. And we can certainly provide that input. But I think that there there could be some additional qualifying language that we add to this to to kind of highlight what that is.
Absolutely. Agree with you a hundred percent. I would just one last comment, say that, you know, as as I've worked through the industry in this regard, the the hardest parts of of doing a permit application is kind of the unknown and a roadmap is often appreciated. You know, the more clear you can make it about what you're asking for and what you expect in an application, the better.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Dominic.
Councilman Hearst.
Thank you for the additional time. Where where I start, where I was rereading to make sure that I've you know, gathering everything that's in there. Can I ask the question of, you know, the statement that says the plan must describe how the operator will eliminate capture and minimize all potentially harmful emissions, including volatile organic compounds, so on and so forth. When that plan is submitted, who who is going to be approving that that meets all the guidelines? And and I'm not questioning our staff's ability to do so, but I just want to make sure if we're going to require that, we have a qualified person to kind of check that box, to make sure that that plan is on par with expectations. They're doing what we feel as the best they can with the regulations that they're living under. What's the action plan would be for that if we if we keep it as is written on the screen right now?
Ms. Hader, are you about to weigh in?
I didn't know if you were or not. To the extent we would not have qualified experts on staff. Case, keep in mind that one of the things we're doing in our code is making sure that we can charge the applicant so that we can we can retain that that expert opinion and review where necessary. I don't think it's going to make long-term economic sense for us to hire someone full-time to do this kind of work for us. We're not going to have the kind of volume for applications. But to be able to to be able to have the resources to go out and get that resource when we need it, to have that reviewed, to make sure that that we understand all the intricacies of this here and that it is meeting this, we are, they are actually doing, what's being proposed does actually eliminate capture or minimize these VOCs, et cetera. So who's going to do it? We we don't know yet, but we're making sure that we have the the resources to bring that person in.
So I I I will share this, and Dominic has the code language in front of him. But obviously, we do make reference to to a discussion about air quality mitigation plan and review in our in our proposed language under fifty-two sixty-six four. But I will also say, I know that there's been a number of different discussions amongst the council members leading up to our discussion today about a a potential environmental consultant to provide a level of engineering review. That also help us to understand other environmental initiatives that we are looking at internally to our process, given that, once again, we don't necessarily have the technical expertise as it may relate to the review of these. So how do we supplement that? And that is a process that we have to look at through our our staffing and resource and and budgeting within our our confines. But it is something that we are evaluating and assessing in addition to fifty-two sixty-six four in the proposed language.
Yeah, a- and really just to clarify where I'm coming from. I I'm not looking to say I disagree with everything, but when you get into a regulatory role, they mean nothing if you cannot enforce it. And so, you know, part of this enforcement of our regulations are taking this plan, looking it over and making sure that it's qualified. The the going out and and hiring a qualified individual is is probably the exact answer I was looking for. And it's not to discount anybody who currently works for the city staff, but there's people who specialize in this particularly. And and one of the things that always concerns me in any case, no matter if we're talking about oil and gas or any other business venture, it is how do we keep it fair and make sure that that outside party is ensuring that we are not changing the goalposts as we go?
Object fair and and balanced review. I appreciate that.
And I'm good with how staff, their proposals.
Councilwoman Noble, you have your hand up?
I do. Thank you very much. I'd like to bring this conversation back a little bit and make certain that we're also taking into consideration the cumulative impacts, the adverse health and safety impacts that are allowed to us under one eighty-one. That was a whole point of passage of one eighty-one. It is, it was not the approve everything oil and gas industry proposes measure. It was the this time residents are not only equal, but perhaps even take precedence. So when you're looking at cumulative impacts, you need to consider all of these wells in terms of the impact on the community and on the city. That is accumulation. That is accumulation. We have under one eighty-one the power to either approve or deny. And that had been taken from us prior to passage of this. So I just want to make certain that that voice is heard in this conversation because it's going off the rails in my mind toward how do we make it possible for operators to do anything that they want to do in Commerce City? And I just want us all to remember that the whole point of the action by the state legislature and the governor last year was to give us local control and allow us to represent our residents and to ensure that their health and safety is not adversely impacted. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to Councilwoman Noble's comments and remind all of council that we not only represent folks who feel this way, but also folks who feel that there are not significant impacts to health and safety under the current regulation and guidelines. And it's important to remember that those people live in our community too. And their livelihoods are affected by the decisions that we are making. And livelihood also translate to well-being. And so no, I don't I don't believe this has been derailed at all. I think it's a good conversation about what does cumulative impact actually mean and how is it applied in the text that's been provided here. And I think it's appropriate to make sure that we are not issuing de facto bans via regulation because that affects residents in our community as well.
Okay, Staff, I think you have your direction. Councilwoman Noble, do you want to rebut?
I do. Thank you because we regularly hear about people working in the industry. And as we know, there are significant issues that are happening in the industry right now that have nothing to do with Commerce City. And I would also like to remind people that there are people who have moved out of Commerce City because of the threat of oil and gas activity. There is, there are people who are living here right now who are concerned about their health. I can give you four names right now. Kelly, Carly, Amanda, and Teresa, who were all part of this issue two years ago and no longer live in this area because of their concern of the number of wells that were coming into this into Commerce City. So it works both directions. It's very difficult. I agree. There's no question about that. But we need to, as you say, respect both sides. And that was what was intended by one eighty-one was to finally balance after fifty-some years of imbalance in the process.
Councilman Hearst.
All right, since we're on topic, we can start naming the people that have had to pick up and move their family out of state since one eighty-one was passed a year after sixty percent of our city voted down one twelve. That's we're sitting here essentially doing the same thing that one twelve asked, was asking for and was voted against. So of course, it goes both ways. There this dramatically affects people's livelihoods in both situations. Have received calls from people who have long-term lung disease, who live in our city, and I understand that. There there are plenty of other conversations that we can go into, but but as stated, you know, there 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 has been conflicting messages from the from the government just in the last three years that you know, we must continue to address and think about as we have these conversations because you know, yes, the community changes from time to time, but but a vast turnover like that is is unheard of.
And if I may, obviously, I I think we've heard an argument from both sides as it relates to cumulative impacts and the effects and and obviously a number of different points of takeaways for us at the staff. What I would communicate is that obviously it is an item of interest that we have had. Obviously, Dominic has shared that this conversation is ongoing at the state level. We are participating in this conversation at the state level, which will give a a level of guidance for us and how we continue to modify and evolve this discussion around that. And obviously, we will be working very closely with you as it pertains to the impacts through our operations and and activities under the land development code. So so thank you on that matter. And once again, we'll take this away, put it in the parking lot as we continue to keep working with the state and as we continue to keep working with the oil and gas community and our residents with these applications as they come as they come in under the new code. So to that, I I think we're on to our last side, if I'm if I'm not mistaken, Mayor, with safety issues that relate to outstanding items from the first meeting. So Dominic.
Yes, we'll be moving on. So regarding safety issues, one council member recommended requiring a risk analysis that the council member is proposing would include the valuation of spills, water contamination, earthquakes, explosions. So that being said, we'll we'll pause it here. And Jason, if there's anything else you want to weigh in here before we start the discussion, feel free.
Yeah, with that, obviously, staff believes with with the risk matters that they are addressed through, obviously, the proposed application and approval requirements that we have in place. And obviously, also at the same time, the state requirements. So it's our position that there's no further discussion and or recommendation or revisions necessary to our proposed draft. But obviously, as always, we're we're welcoming any conversation from from council on the matter.
Once again, start with your number two, three, nine.
I would agree with Jason, Jason's analysis of this.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
There's parts of this that I agree, but somewhere, Jason, under this safety issues, I remember expressing some concerns about when the well is plugged, will that come later or is that part of or can that be added to that or is that coming up later on?
So we we did discuss plug and abandonment of wells. And obviously, I think the concern you had brought up as part of our initial discussion was the ongoing the ongoing maintenance and or monitoring of those plug and abandoned wells. We did have a discussion on it on the twenty-second. We do plan on touching back over this item as part of our recap here shortly.
Okay. Yeah, then right now I would agree with your recommendations, Jason. Thank you.
What was your recommendation, Jason?
Our recommendation was that we believe that the risk matters are properly addressed in our proposed language and also within the state requirements. So we're not proposing any additional revisions beyond what you have in the in the LDC draft.
I don't think the risks are considered. I don't think the risks are considered enough. So actually, I do believe that more needs to be involved, and that includes a risk analysis.
I'm good with staff recommendation.
My, my feeling is that the application process, both of the city and the state, is an informal risk analysis where we're gathering together all the data possible to understand the risks in place and making sure that they follow the regulations. Therefore, I am good with staff recommendation.
I echo exactly what Mr. Hurst just said and would support staff recommendation in this case.
I support staff recommendation as well.
Staff, you have your direction.
Yes, sir. And if I may, Mayor, we have actually come to the end of tackling all sixteen items. That being said, it's, it's eight eleven, but we do have a brief recap and/or a recap of what we had heard from the previous meeting. Once again, just to make sure that there is a clear and consistent understanding and consensus to what was discussed. And obviously, we have a couple of tabled items. It would be my recommendation, if council is willing and open and up to it, that we press forward and through, given that, once again, we, I think we are there at the finish line, just once again, recapturing some of the items from our previous discussion.
Does anybody take issue with proceeding on?
Yes, I have a question. You suggesting that we are relitigating these?
Not relitigating. Once again, we are clarifying what we had received from council as it relates to discussion topics such as surface use agreements, modifications, transfer ability permits. There were a couple of and once again, finalize our discussion around that because we did not come to a consensus. But since we are on hand, we want to make sure that the consensus that was given was clear for us so that we can actually be able to deliver that as requested of us in any new
I thought that we took, you went through the process of taking like sort of votes on each of these things. The two, of course, that we didn't figure out yet. I think that makes sense. But my fear is that as you bring each of these up, we're going to and we'll be here for another eighty-six hours again.
If I may offer, ma'am, we can always ultimately just jump to the items that are in question that we did table to focus the conversation.
Same time I say that, I have something that I wanted to ask everyone about. When it came to the setback conversation that we had this evening, we didn't discuss the arsenal. And back in the past, in agreement, they have the same thing that an ROA or BMPs would be. There was a setback from the arsenal and the arsenal isn't even mentioned in the setbacks. We all know concerned about not including them in the thousand feet that the majority agreed with. Is the thousand-foot setback from the arsenal. And that was something, that's a thousand feet that the majority agreed upon earlier.
Yeah, that is a concern I have as well. You know, and that eventually does need to be addressed. Agree with Councilwoman Noble, it is a concern and something that needs to be addressed.
Councilwoman Noble, can I ask, or just not, not trying to be a condescending question at all, can I ask what, how the operation of
Condescending question?
I'm trying to understand so I can better answer your, your question to see if it is a concern of mine. But I want to better understand how the past happened there, but moving a thousand foot back, whether it's the water, whether it's past activities, because we know there was some pretty gnarly past activities in the arsenal. When, when, if, if we were, if a company were to go out there and drill oil, how do those two, the past operations and the become a problem as they, as they are operating close to one another?
What, it's penetrating through the earth into areas that had already proven to be an issue before. The north end of the arsenal, and that's where the, the most chemicals are being held. That's why that mound is so huge. It's to try and trap those chemicals as best as they can. We know that there is a plume that to the west. There is equipment at the corner of Ninety-Sixth and Highway Two that is used to sort of clean that water. So it just seems to me around the edges of the arsenal that it would be back from the arsenal so that we don't disturb any of the superfund activities that were done to try and keep us safe. You know, those bison are beautiful to look at, but they are canaries in the coal mine. That's why they're there. This is not simply a park for us to look at wildlife. Any of those wildlife that we know that there is something that has begun leaking on that property. There has been everything under the sun that could possibly have been manufactured at the arsenal. And we want to be certain that we contain it. And I don't know why it's mentioned it many times and the last two times we've talked about it, it's just gone right out of my brain. And, and I apologize for taking this back to this subject, but I really hate to overlook it and to it not, to at least not include it on that list, to just include it on the list for the thousand-foot setback.
Natural runoff and water, all the water quality and water containment projects that they have out there. Those natural basins and everything would already have setbacks built into them based off the regulation. But even though they're not on Commerce City property, those flood plains and everything else that we're not allowed to develop on still very much come into play in that decision-making, still have to have setback from those. I just want, I was wondering, you know, with that taken into consideration, what kind of impact are we Creek is almost at the edge of, you know, in a lot of areas, it's almost at the edge of the arsenal. And so you already have a natural setback built in and regulation there. And so really, is it as big of an issue of the arsenal?
Everyone who has worked on reclamation of that site and who was involved in the superfund development decades ago are very familiar with the problems and are very concerned say a thousand feet. It was actually far more than that in the extraction agreement. So I do see your point in a way, but since the council majority doesn't seem willing to do some feet for the arsenal as well.
That, again, I'm not saying, yeah, I was just trying to understand it because we, you know, approved to build the, the industrial centers out there by the parking lots and everything. And to me, of where the, what exactly the concerns are in the operational, operations of the two, you know.
Well, because these are drilling into areas that we know them that are, are quite dangerous and they're drilling very deeply, which is where these contaminants were put. They were put miles down, which is as far down as one of these horizontal wells drills. So it's what's planned for the extraction ones, for example, but if we have a setback, then at least the drilling can't come within a thousand feet of the arsenal.
Conversation. One, we have had a, a past and a, or a previous conversation or presentation by the arsenal or the Army Corps of Engineers with respect to the arsenal in regards to the plume. So we can obviously push that information back out to similarly, at the same time, obviously, in, I'll say, current application with what we have as an oil and gas permit on file in somewhat of proximity to the arsenal, that application was referred out. And what we had received back was no comment or no issues with respect to the proposed application for oil and gas. That was, that was within some arsenal as a referral agent with our applications. And obviously, we then had a presentation from them as it related to the plume on the arsenal site.
It wasn't on this city council at that time. This, and, and I believe this was before you were on, you were here as well. The PFAS either, PFAS. So, you know, I, I appreciate their point of view, but we also know what the situation is at the arsenal and hmm, is something that we shouldn't disturb.
Understood. And I do appreciate that. And I simply wanted to provide, once again, just some of that clarifying information that may help the discussion around with council. And to be clear, when I but to your point, they also did present information to the city as it related to the plume. And once again, we're more than willing to offer that to this council for, for your thoughts and understanding as it relates to their position with oil and gas and other, other aspects.
The statements that Director Roger made were correct. So the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, as well as the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, I'm sorry, the, the military, the entity that essentially is responsible for the arsenal, did provide comments on the oil and gas application that is adjacent to the arsenal. And more of those specific concerns were or specifically addressing the plume. So there is a roughly delineated mapped plume that has varied over time that is a result of the, the chemical manufacturing that occurred in the eighties with the Shell Oil. Adjacent lighting impacts and landscaping to reduce the potential impacts of wildlife adjacent to the, the arsenal. So that, that's just kind of additional information as to what, what they reviewed and what they commented on when they were referred out.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the additional info. Colorado is suing the federal government because of the inadequacy of the protections that they have in place currently. So I think there are two sides to every story. So perhaps we need to take another look at this because there's some reason that the state of Colorado doesn't believe that something is adequate at this point in time.
Similar concerns to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Thank you, Dominic.
Thank you, Mayor. Is someone on staff able to discuss the depth at which these
They're generally between sixty and a hundred feet below grade.
Sixty and a hundred feet below surface grade?
Yeah. So basically between sixty and a hundred feet from the, the top of the surface, that's where the plume sits and it's
Thing that you're referring to?
Yes, I am. So if we avoid those by not drilling in that area, that would seem to be the, the best choice. We know that there are fault lines. We know that there were sixteen hundred this is good. The city should be taking responsibility and obtaining the, the map of the fault lines in the area as well. And this is not something that we should be going into cavalierly. It's very important that we do everything that to protect the residents for what can be a more intrusive industry than some industries here in Commerce City.
I would just like to add then that the plumes are at sixty to a hundred feet below surface. Fracturing would not occur to cover groundwater aquifers and all the way through the length of the well. And so it seems to me that it would be unlikely that you would drill through a plume at sixty feet and fracking an imminent risk as far as that's concerned.
I've talked to engineers about this and they would disagree. So you're a regulatory manager for an oil and gas operator. I am so do need a third party who has the scientific expertise, who can actually determine what the answer is. But it's not something that we as a city should ignore.
Sure. I'm simply suggesting that you would not frac into a plume at sixty to a hundred feet below
You will go through it with your equipment.
And how far do they come outside of the arsenal? What is your understanding?
So our, our understanding is that the, the arsenal the plume fluctuates. So looking at historical maps, it's significantly reduced from its peak. Probably in the early nineteen nineties, but it does generally extend forward. I think if, kind of looking at where this specifically is in the northwest corner. But it, it's, it's really hard and from what we understand in our conversations with the arsenal, it's extremely difficult to be able to definitively It's extremely difficult to, um, be able to definitively say these are the exact boundaries at this point in time. Um, given that groundwater or that, that specific layer within the ground. But it's, it's not a straightforward answer, uh, because it's not necessarily a straightforward, uh, condition.
And, and Dominic, I think what we can also still offer is that, uh, we can reach back out to, uh, those who are in control of the arsenal to come back out and to make a presentation to our council to be able to. Aspects that may or may not impact that so that you have what you need, um, at your fingertips.
I would also comment that baseline groundwater sampling is a common practice prior to drilling wells. And so there would be an indication of, uh, being incon. Just for some additional information for other council members.
Well, thank you for that lively discussion. Do weigh in on whether or not we should have a setback from the arsenal. Um, just go two through nine on what you think.
I, I would say no.
They have both. So I'd say, uh, I'd rather have it away from people.
I would, like I said, just continuation what I mentioned before, I do think there should be. Sure that health and environmental safety issues are addressed.
I agree with Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yeah, I would like to get more information, um, from the arsenal.
Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to getting more information on a specific topic, just because I, I don't know as much about, um, the movement of the plume and things like that. The, the. So I'm not e- exactly opposed to. I said before that there are several features in the arsenal that will create setbacks already in the regulation. Um, that, that will always have to be considered. So, um, I'd like to hear some more information, but, but I'm, I'm. Good with, um, no setback as it is right now, trying to understand what we can do, um, on top of.
Councilwoman Grimes has already spoken. So, um, the staff can work on getting a presentation for us on the impact of this and, uh, try to get as much information as possible from varied sources, not just from the Army Corps of Engineers. To get the most accurate information possible for us to make future decisions with, that would be great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So now can we go back to those two items that were tabled last time?
Uh, yes, give me one second to load up. The item that we were at last time, um, that there was no specific consensus provided. Um, so this, this pertains to reverse setbacks. So as we talked about in the code, there's two proposed types of setbacks. The first setback being, um, the normal setback, which is from a newly planned facility to an existing home. This facility or this setback that we're discussing now is a reverse setback, which is measured from. An existing facility to newly constructed homes. So if the development comes in later after the oil and gas. Is in place, this is what we're discussing. So multiple council members requested discussion on the reverse setback requirement. And potentially keeping the reverse setback at a thousand feet for the lifetime of the well. To develop, to balance competing demands from community stakeholders, a reduced reverse setback during the production phase, but impacts were less pronounced was proposed in the March draft. Um, there was no clear consensus established during the June twenty second study session. Um, so about that, um, I'll, I'll leave it up to Jason to provide any additional thoughts. And as you all begin, then I'll, I'll actually just pull up what those, um, what the proposed draft regulation has now for that.
So obviously the Dominic point is kind of simple, you know, kind of putting it down as a, it's a temporary prohibition on new development within a certain distance of a well. Uh, obviously we proposed a, a range of setbacks, uh, as Dominic's pulling that up. Um, once again, we have that range as it currently stands, uh, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, based on the number of well counts. Uh, the question that we have for counselors, do you wish to keep what we propose? You, do you wish to modify, uh, what we proposed? And or, uh, look at a, a straight removal of that. And, uh, having it be concurrent with what is identified in section one.
Councilwoman Noble?
Uh, I'm sorry. I didn't know my hand. My hand was still up from the, from the previous case. Uh, I supported a thousand feet last time.
Thank you. So it's time to change it up. We'll go from nine to two. Um, please give your opinion on whether or not we should go with staff recommendations, if you'd like to amend staff recommendations. Or if you want to go with what was currently in the L D C proposal prior to these recommendations.
Think we should stick with staff recommendation. Mr. Rogers or Dominic, would, I'm sorry, would you just clarify for me what we're looking at on the screen is the staff recommendation?
So to clarify, staff's recommendation was to not modify the March ten draft. Um, so staff's recommendation would be, uh, what's on the screen?
So that, yes.
Sorry, just trying to read through it quickly. While I favor a lesser reverse setback, uh, I'm, I am comfortable with staff's recommendation, uh, and the tiered system. Based on well count.
Yeah, I. No, I still favor, depends on the, the stage of, of the well site. You know, obviously I, I would, I would be more willing to have a larger setback at the beginning during, during, uh, the beginning stages of. Production and then see it fall down as, as the life goes and as the, the risk falls, but, um, I am willing to, um, pick the staff recommendation that's on the screen.
I also like, uh, the thousand.
And I also support, um, a thousand.
As I stated, I support a thousand.
Um, I support a thousand.
Yeah, I think it should be, uh, five hundred regardless of the well count.
That sounds to me like a majority of the council was in support of a thousand foot.
Yeah, wait.
Mayor, I heard. I apologize. Uh, my count may be wrong. I saw four, um, for that, but I, I may have missed one.
I saw four for a thousand, three for staff's recommendations, and then one for, um, an add of. Being five hundred across the board regardless of well count.
Right, um, I could have over two, right?
You do.
Okay, so I would make it five, right?
If you said a thousand, yes.
Thank you. So a majority of the council wishes for a thousand foot.
Okay. I misunderstood. Thank you.
Okay.
Well. Or the.
That is.
Because here, my concern is really future development in the city and what kind of swath. That takes out of development for commercial, residential, um, you know, unnecessarily and. Uh, I think it's important to talk about what does that look like as the life of the well continues. And to Mr. Hurst's point, uh, risk reduces over time and, um, that's a huge hit to the city's development. Uh, to, to make a, a sweeping setback like a thousand feet.
You know, I, I agree with that point, but I think probably the smartest thing that I heard on June twenty second, I didn't get a chance to chime in at the time. And as when Councilman Madera said that a landowner needs to decide, do you want to have industrial property? Do you want to have commercial property? Do you want to have residential property? But you can't have your cake and eat it too. And so right now we need to decide, are we going to have a community that has predefined residential space and commercial space? Are we going to have a community that tries to blend industrial with the residential and the commercial? And I think a majority of the council has just stated that they'd like to have predefined spaces.
We're, we're going to have a lot of empty spaces, not necessarily predefined, if I'm understanding correctly.
Well, that is a risk. If oil and gas moves forward in those areas and makes the area so that it cannot be developed with residential and commercial, then yes, that could be possible. Or oil and gas could decide not to move there and the landowner could decide that he wants to have residential and commercial property instead of industrial property. But I agree with, uh, Councilman Madera that you can't have your cake and eat it too and have industrial and residential, which are not conducive with each other.
I think, uh, I don't, I don't disagree with you in some ways, Mayor. However. We are, we're making a decision on behalf of the residents and what development can happen in their community, in our community by taking out massive swaths of land.
Councilwoman Noble?
My apologies. My hand just wasn't down. I, I agree with you though. However, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, I, uh, I, again, I, I, I just worried about it because we're putting our. You know, I talked about this back at our last meeting. We're just putting that decision of our growth area out of our hands. It's not our land. Uh, the, the area that we're talking about east of Tower Road, uh, that, I'm not saying it's guaranteed. I'm just saying price barrels, right? It's far more. We just spent thirteen point eight million dollars, uh, approved thirteen point eight million dollars last year to start moving. So we can have development happen out there. Um, that could be completely. Setback, I might, I might be willing to listen to the conversation if we had it minimized after, you know, a, a, you know, different stages of production. And so, um, to me, we're going to, we have the potential of having big. Owner, they bought the mineral rights and the land because they do have the ability to have, eat their ki- or have their cake and eat it too. That's their right. Their right is to drill for oil and then sell the land on top to build, to build, um. That right. They always have, uh, and we don't have the authority to change that. And so what we're going to have is big circles that look like big old crop circles. Um, potentially in our city, in our growth area that are going to take out large swaths of lands because it's more profitable to the landowner, whether that's right or.
Reverse setback is only specific to residential only. As you all may remember, we did also allow, um, as part of any oil and gas request that would come for. Or to request a modification of that setback, not to exceed, correct me if I'm wrong, Dominic, up to twenty percent.
That's correct. Twenty percent would be the maximum, um, that, uh, an operator could apply for.
Of our homes currently, uh, sometimes less than that. And so I, I think it still begs the question about what does the future of Commerce City look like? For our residents who are begging for commercial and retail development if we, uh, assert a one thousand foot setback forever. On, uh.
That back in the reverse setback is not a permanent setback, correct? It's a temporary until the completion phase, unless there's been a lapse or a revocation or forfeiture, correct? And do you have any idea, maybe Mr. Sarah knows what that may look like? Obviously a larger. To understand the issue fully, then.
Yeah, you know, I, I'll, I'll just kind of go in here and, and given that it seems like at this point, the majority of council is at a thousand foot reverse setback. Um, I do want to make it extremely clear what staff's proposed language was. So when we talk about the. Sixty two eighty one, it says for permitted well sites, where all permitted wells have not entered completions, no new residential lots may be applied within one thousand feet of such well site. So basically up until the point where they're doing initial site grading and doing the drilling and completions process. They basically have a thousand foot setback. And then at the point where these wells are completed is when. That reverse setback is reduced to what's listed in table six dash one. So in terms of kind of explaining that, so. In these draft regulations now, there's a temporary reverse setback of a thousand feet. That's reduced once the facility goes into the production phase. So when we're talking about this and, and this applies strictly to new residential construction, it does not apply to new commercial construction, new industrial construction or anything, anything of those lines. So, um, that being said, Matt, Sarah, if you're still on the line. If you want to weigh in on what some other local governments have proposed or have already adopted, I think can provide additional color to this discussion.
Sure. So. I'm not aware of, of any local government that has a thousand foot reverse setback, uh, across the board. I think that, um, certainly a thousand feet, uh, during the drilling in hydraulic fracturing phases. Uh, makes a lot of sense, given that, that, that is a tremendous impact. However, uh, the, those impacts go down, um, when you're looking at. Uh, the production phase, particularly in Commerce City, when they're going to be requiring, you, you all will be requiring, uh, oil pipelines. So really those sites aren't even going to be visited that often, um, by trucks and certainly not by, uh, tanker trucks. So this would be, uh, a thousand foot setback would be, um, large. However, uh, as has already been stated, uh, those areas could be used, uh, from, by industrial use, uh, commercial use, everything but residential use. The, the one caveat that I think that we have that we have to consider is that there are also historic wells, uh, within city limits. And that I would read this to apply to those historic wells as well. And those historic wells are just single individual wells.
Thank you for clarifying. I, I apologize for my, my misreading of the code, so.
See, that, that's another concern because just because other.
See, that that's another concern because just because other cities um doesn't have that, doesn't mean Commerce City can't establish that. And then um, you know, so I I'm sticking with my a thousand and just like I said, to protect the safety and healthy, and this is some, an issue that there's so many possible things unknown, you know, and and why can't Commerce City be the first to have the thousand feet then?
All right, Councilman, what do you all?
Yeah, and 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 I'm sticking with that. And maybe this promotes more commercial, which our residents have been wanting because commercial could be within that thousand feet according to um Mr. Sura. Uh so I think uh the residential stays away and it can promote to that land developer to sound a commercial.
So we're willing to let businesses be in danger because we're saying it's dangerous, but we're not willing to let residentials that the employees that work those businesses, if that's our real concern, we should be concerned about them too. That that argument to me is is being lost on me.
Well, then I would add commercial and industrial then too to a thousand feet.
And we're back to the point I was making. That's all I was trying to get at.
So if I may, what I've come to understand is that the majority of council has given guidance and direction to staff to adjust the setback or reverse setback from new residential lots to production sites from the three hundred, four hundred, five hundred to a thousand feet, regardless of well count. Okay?
Would can may I ask one more question? Would council entertain a staff analysis uh in the form of maps to show exactly what uh with the proposed pads and those uh proposed one thousand foot step reverse setback uh would actually look like and how it overlays our uh our planned development?
Anybody on council have an opinion regarding that?
Councilwoman, can you repeat the the last part of that? I um was having some weird connection issue.
Sure, no problem. I'm I'm having some connection issues as well tonight. Um I I asked if council would entertain um staff analysis in the form of a map that would show an overlay of what a thousand foot reverse setback would look like with the proposed pads um as they're proposed now and what that looks like overlaid on top of our planned future development.
I think that's a natural request because we've done it with every other setback opport- option. Um so I support that.
Councilwoman Noble?
Councilmember Grimes, um could you please address uh the wells that your operator has or storage batteries that your operator has within the boundaries of Commerce City or within our growth area? I think it would be um important. Uh the two I know of are Colorado AB one, which are storage batteries over at Tower and um ninety-sixth. They um happen to sit on Adams County land. But East Point is cruising up on that site as are the Kerry Homes that um Oakwood is building or cru- cruising up on that site. Ackard North, uh the other well site is in our growth area on the other side of four seventy. I think it's important that uh these uh comments regarding the reverse setback and the impacts that they'll have on our future growth um have context.
Absolutely happy to address both of those, Councilwoman Noble. Uh Colorado State AB well is in fact in an enclave of Adams County, but very close to Commerce City boundaries.
And clearly, it is in Commerce City. It's not outside our boundaries. It's in our boundaries at ninety-six and Tower. Is that correct?
That's correct, but it is an Adams County property nonetheless.
I said that. I said that.
It is irrelevant. That well has been planned for a P and A for two years and we are battling back and forth with COGCC to get approval to P and A that well. Uh so there are no plans to keep that well at all. And the Ackard North permits are actually being withdrawn.
If if I may be able to weigh in, one thing I want to share and and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but uh obviously for existing platted lots, as of the adoption of this ordinance, they would not be subject to this ordinance because they already have their entitlement and their approvals in place. Thereby, for lack of better words, grandfathering them in order to continue moving forward with construction, correct?
That's that's correct. Where those lots have already, yes, where the platting has already occurred, they already have that entitlement. And we could not with withhold that from them or withdraw that from them.
So we had a previous conversation regarding setbacks from the arsenal and the consensus of the council was let's get the experts in and let's look at it and let's explore a little, little bit more. Majority of the council has voted for the thousand foot reverse setback on this. However, there's a request out there that we actually have a little bit more information provided to us before we make a final decision. Um is everybody on council agreeable to tabling this discussion until we have that presentation on more information of what it looks like for our future growth boundary as well as future development plan in Commerce City? If you can just uh go to nine through two and just let me know what you'd like to do.
I'd like to see more information. Likewise, would like to see more information.
Me too.
Yeah, I'm good on more information.
It's to you, Councilwoman Noble.
Sorry, I didn't know it was my turn. Um yes, of course. That would be fine.
I'm okay with more information as well.
Come in.
Yeah, I would like to see more information.
Staff, please bring back more information on this before we make a final determination.
If if I may ask, Mayor, just for clarity purpose for for me and my staff, as you're saying final determination purposes, um is that a additional study session or is that uh as part of our public hearing process that we bring forward to you with uh this proposed language?
Um if you can squeeze that in for Monday evening, that way we don't derail the timeline that you're about to talk with us. That'd be great. It should be, shouldn't take very long to uh slap up some maps with some concentric circles on it and show us what's developed and what's planned and allow us at that time. So we have a study session on the twenty seventh. I think that would be if you could squeeze that in. I know that's a heavily laden meeting, but fifteen minutes or so just to give us that information so we can give you final direction before you proceed on the timeline you're about to brief us on.
Definitely. And I I I do appreciate that, Mayor. We will try to pull together maps with uh the information that's been provided to us from uh the development community that we may have available.
We can run an analysis as well.
And if if that's information that you can send out in a presentation before the twenty seventh, then you know, we can all look at and study prior to, that would be great as well. That way you can just give us a high level overview and we can give you direction. Provided it doesn't take longer than fifty-nine minutes and fifty-nine seconds to do so.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to the last item that was unresolved from the June twenty-second study session. Uh I'm gonna go ahead and pull this up here. Let me see if I can find it. So the last item that was unresolved from the June twenty-second study session is uh permit transfer. Um so multiple council members request a discussion on permit transferability. Um one requested removal of the provision that a permit may not be transferred within ninety days. Um one council member requested the transfer permit may only occur prior to the drilling and completions phase. And then one council member recommended the site must be inspected and brought to code before a transfer can be approved with um that council member recommending following three subbullets. Um so that being said, um Jason, I'll leave it up to you to provide any additional thoughts and facilitate this discussion.
But I think with what we're, what we are obviously looking for is, one, we try to mirror a process that we have established um either inherently or as part of our um inherently to what's allowed for other applications um in the development review process, but also from what we have heard from a number of different conversations with uh stakeholders within the, within the community and and also what we've heard around discussion around the table with with council. Uh obviously, the question here is that do we want to permit transfer, permit transferability? Uh do we not? Uh and at that same time, when would we want to permit transferability if that option remains uh on the table within uh the uh construction phase and or production phase of of an application?
Uh Councilman Hurst?
I apologize. My hand is going down.
Councilwoman Grimes?
So I I think I made it pretty clear that I think transferability is a pretty critical piece of of the code here. Um what I would say after reflecting on our last meeting is that I do agree that there should be a process in place for that transfer, whatever that looks like, um a checklist of sorts um to make sure that uh the new operator would be able to comply with all regulation, uh is able to secure appropriate bonding as per the um draft regulation uh or as as per regulation rather. And um I I think that's important. I just think there needs to be a roadmap for how to do that. I'm not suggesting that um there should just be a swap of tr- of permits and there's no review from the city. So I think transferability is i- is very critical, um but it should have a review from city staff. And then um I would also just like to comment on um the bullet point that suggests that transfer of permit may only occur prior to the drilling and completion phase. And and I would just suggest that there's not a permit to transfer once a well has been drilled uh and or completed. Um at that point, it is just property and ownership of a company to sell to some some other operator once the permits have been executed.
Councilwoman Noble?
Uh this is a perfect um a perfect regulation that's coming before us right now, particularly in light of extraction of oil and gases uh bankruptcy. Um you know, several things are happening with that company. They just let another sixty-two people go. Um they lost their pipeline company to investors in the process of this bankruptcy. We made an R O A agreement with them um last year. That included B and Ps that was uh signed in September. So much has occurred since. And here we are looking at regulations that are uh different and improved. I would assume that the staff has gone to all this trouble, that they uh learned things and wanted them included. And so here we are now going through this whole regulation process. These are regulations that should be applied to any application or permit prior to um drilling and completion. So that we can ensure that if any company goes out of business, that the new company that comes in has to meet the new standards that exist. So for example, you sell a car that is fifteen years old and doesn't have the appropriate smog equipment on it. You have to bring that car up to current standards in order to get a license. You may have already owned the car. You may have bought the car legally from the person who was selling it, but you still have to bring it up to current standards. And that's what I think is really critical. We're not talking about an average industry. This is not a typical everyday industry that is coming into Commerce City. This is not like the um the auto junkyard we heard last night. This is far more impactful on many levels. This has far more in common with um Suncor than it does with anything else. So I think that anything that we can do with regards to bringing any of these permits up to current standards, um it behooves us to do that.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, and I would just really push um, you know, that the transfer permits that the operator has to reapply um because kind of piggybacking on what Council Noble, Councilwoman Noble stated, it, you know, it's reminds me of a similar situation, you know, like say, for example, a physician or a nurse. When they reapply for their license, they still have to be investigated, make sure they were, they didn't have any, you know, say for this company, was there any fines or there a violation? So I think the operator should have to reapply to make sure, you know, similar to what Councilwoman Noble said, they're they're following, um you know, they're complying and they're, they haven't had any preexisting fines or anything and someone was monitoring them as well.
Councilman Madera?
I agree that there should be um some transferability, but there needs to be a process uh either through city council approval or staff approval and that the new operator will bring the property up to whatever the current land development code is. So um yeah, I think um we we need to have that there because otherwise we're gonna be the ones left stuck with the revenue in the the situation, which, no, we don't, we don't want that. So I think it's in our best interest to have transferability, but with some conditions.
Councilwoman Noble?
My apologies. Darn hand wasn't down.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
My apologies also.
Councilman Hurst?
So I I think I I'm kind of same uh both as Megan and um on on the, on in the sense of, I'm not opposed to reapplication. It's just what are we reapplying for? Uh I think it's a significant waste of city resources to go out and measure measure that it's a thousand foot from the nearest water source or things like that. Those specific things that are unchanged, um you know, obviously some type of uh a review of the area to ensure that there hasn't been significant changes would be essential, but we'd have to, in my opinion, we can come to a compromise where this application is taking a look at the new company. Can they, can they meet the bond requirements? Do they have the insurance requirements? Do they have the technology and the equipment and the accessibility to um to be able to uh comply with all of our regulations? There shouldn't be any issue there. There shouldn't be any issue there, because no investor is going to buy a new company and try to take on work that hasn't already done their homework to make sure that they can do all of those things. At least no investor that I've heard ever being successful would do that. And so, to me, that seems very natural to, you know, we have some strict standards set in our land development code to investigate the company as, as Councilwoman Ellen Thomas was saying, it's similar to, you know, re-registering for a license in any, any other situation. You still have to be, you get a, a background check to get a CDL, you have to get your fingerprints, your background check, all of that. That, that happens in many industries that, that's completely acceptable to me. Let's just not ask for the redundancies on our staff time on things that haven't changed. You know, just try to find that balance to where it makes the most sense, where we're actually checking on the new company, making sure that they can be in compliance, and then the, the unchanged items kind of are, are ensured that they're unchanged, and we move on.
Councilwoman Smith.
I would agree with a lot of things that Councilman Hurst said. I don't think we need to go back to ground zero when, when, I think transferability is important, but I don't think we need to go back to ground zero for everything. I think like a little checklist of making sure that they have equipment that's up to date. They don't have Flintstone era equipment drilling for oil, but I think transferability is important. But just, just the checklist to make sure that they're doing all right.
Councilman Hurst.
Final thing, you, you know, I, I hear us quite a lot talk about the financials of, of, you know, extraction. And I understand its importance in the context, but we're talking about land development code. We're not talking about moving forward on, on issuing and allowing drilling to start next week. Land development code doesn't particularly talk about, one, you know, there, there could be thirty oil and gas companies that end up trying to qualify to, to have an operation in Commerce City, and they can all be in different financial, but we can't take that into consideration when, when deciding a land development case. You have to, does it fit inside the, the land development code? But I believe we can take that into more consideration when we are approving the final permit so they can start drilling. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, we build these safeguards into our land development code, but also understanding that we're not just doing these land development codes for extraction of oil and gas in the, in the current situation that the city's in. This is for any number of companies that has the potential to, to move in here. If, if all of a sudden the climate changes and, and, you know, oil and gas is back in Colorado. That's what I want us to prepare for, is if extraction of oil and gas got, got bought tomorrow by an incredibly wealthy company that, you know, didn't have any financial problems, are we making a land development code that considers that too? Are we gonna make it extremely tough for that company just because we're worried about? Why would we drag them through the dirt for the same reasons? And so I just want to make sure we're all thinking about beyond our current situation that this is future tense for everybody and anybody in this situation. And, and really for the flexibility of, there could be, you know, we're talking about long-term changes to land development code.
To, to help frame this discussion, I think it might be useful to just go ahead and share what the current language is within the proposed March ten draft. And I can provide a little bit of background of what's in here. So basically, what we're stating at this point in time and what the proposed requirement is, is that an oil and gas permit may be assigned to another operator only with the written consent of the director. The director may consent to an assignment of a permit only if the new operator can and will comply with all requirements, terms and conditions of the code. The oil and gas permit and any regional operator agreement in all applicable state, local and federal laws and rules and regulations. And the new operator demonstrates adequate insurance and post-financial assurances required of the previous operator. The new operator will remedy any non-site compliance with any applicable local or state regulations and permits as a condition of the assignment, and the oil and gas permit was approved more than ninety days before the assignment. So at this time, staff did not bring forward any proposed language changes from this, but essentially what this is, is a very specific review of a transfer of a permit when an operator, when a new operator comes in, basically looking and making sure that they have all the information that they, they can demonstrate showing that they are fully able to comply with the current regulations that are in place and remedy any non-site compliance. So with that, just kind of additional information for your, you know, the discussion that's occurring. Councilwoman Noble.
Dominic, does that mean that in C, fourteen C, that they must bring the application up to current LDC?
Applicable local state or regulations, that would be the application at the time of permit. So let's say that they attain a city permit at a specific time. They would be required to comply with that as it pertains to the state level. That's how that reads, but that would under, obviously be under CRGCC jurisdiction. Matt Hader, I don't know if you want to weigh in from a legal standpoint on that or not.
Yeah.
I want to make sure my question is understood, though. If, if a permit, if, if a company is being purchased by someone and it includes an application, does that application have to be brought up to current code? Let's say the application was put in a year ago, and now we have new code.
The app, the, the rules are gonna apply to the application whenever that application is deemed complete, whatever rules are in place at that time. If a company is acquired during the application process, that would not change what is applicable to that permit, to that permit application.
Well, then they do need to reapply. Then, then I agree with Jennifer, they need to reapply.
So, if, if somebody has applied for something, I, I, what I'm hearing you suggest is you want to summarily reject their application if the ownership of the company is, is transferred during an application process?
No, I want the application brought up to current code. The whatever that, that, that the company who buys that ongoing application has to bring it up to current code. We had this discussion previously, and there was a great, let me finish, Mr. Hader, please. There was a great explanation that was made, which was that this is being monetized. And this was brought up the last time we talked, that it's being monetized by the company at the city's expense. I thought that was an excellent point. So why would we not want to make certain that any operation isn't up to current code?
I'm very confused by your, by the terms that you're using, because you're talking about applications as opposed to permits. This is a section that addresses the assignment of a permit, which means an application has been approved and a permit has been issued.
Well, you just, you used the term deemed complete, so you moved it back prior to the permit.
I was trying to address your issue when you raised the issue that you wanted to see an application be updated. So I'm, I was just trying to get some clarity for what you're trying to.
Oh, yes, and I did, when I spoke earlier, I said, and a permit that has not been drilled or completed.
Okay, so at this point, I'm confused about what you're trying to get an answer to.
Okay, let me try again. I'll just find another way of saying it if that's helpful. Operator A comes in, makes an application for two wells, well one and well two. Operator A goes out of business or simply decides to sell well one and well two. Well, one has a permit but has not yet been drilled or completed. Well, two is still in application stage. Whatever the case may be, both well one and well two need to be brought up to code in order for the sale, if you will, to occur. That, that we are always keeping the standards as high as we possibly can and at the level that the city has determined them to be. You have all gone through this exercise to come up with all of these new regulations that essentially have zero effect on thousands of miles of fracking. However, if by chance, we can actually make it so that any of these wells or sites have to meet our new standards, then we have done something good for the community, and you have invested time wisely.
I think we made the question more complicated than the original question.
May I restate the question? Yeah, you want to restate the question, Mr. Madera?
So, because I think it's a question that I also have, is, um, does the oper, the, the new operator have to bring the site to whatever the land development code is at the time of the assignment?
Essentially, yes, that is what the question is. I think there are some practical impossibilities, and I do want to, to reflect, Ms. Noble, directly. The staff and the attorneys have spent a considerable amount of time, yes, drafting these regulations as directed by council over the last three years. That is absolutely true. Some of the suggestions of requiring a new, an operator to, upon the assignment or of a permit to bring it up to code becomes complicated by the fact that code is a very expansive term. And so if a permit was issued for a well under a code that allowed, that had no setback, and then a setback was imposed under the code later, in between the permit issuance and the time of the proposed transfer, that permit could not comply with that code, thus mandating the shutdown of that well or making it an impossibility to transfer that well. So I just, I want that to be considered in that implication. And so, there is also then a suggestion that if the code requires a certain type of technology or a certain type of screening, that you would have an underperforming well that doesn't meet these expectations that no one would be willing to buy. I believe these are the items that staff has attempted to draft around with regard to the assignment of permits. And so, to avoid the city being left with a permitted constructed, constructed well that may be operated by somebody that you don't want to operate it, but then no one will be willing to come in and remedy existing deficiencies in that well. And so, the transferability of a permit does have a great potential to benefit the community overall. I believe that is, that has been staff's motive in drafting the regulations in this manner, to allow some flexibility and to make sure that, at a minimum, some standards are met. And if we're talking specifically about the extraction wells, I believe the assignability of those permits is addressed within the regional operator agreement, and I have not looked at it recently, but I believe that the assignment provisions are very similar to what is presented here. So I would just submit those items with respect for the, with respect to this question for the entire council.
Thank you for that. I think that clarifies a lot of my questions.
Um, where my Councilwoman Grimes?
So I, I'd like to just comment on something Mr. Hader kind of touched on, and that is the difference between a permitted, an approved permit for wells and/or a pad versus an application that is unapproved, and then additionally, wells that have already been spud or started to be drilled. And I think it's important to delineate the difference, because wells that are being drilled or have been drilled certainly are subject to the obligations of code throughout the life of those wells. The COGCC does this all the time. They come up with new regulations. You have to bring your old wells up to current code, right? Wells that have already been drilled. I think what we're talking about specifically here with relation to permits is, you know, an approved permit has a, an expiring deadline, if you will. They will expire within a few years. And at that point, when the, the permits expire, it's customary to reapply, and you are then subject to updated regulation. And I think that's an important distinction to make. It's, it's hard for me to kind of wrap my head around how you would approve, the city would approve a permit, and then you would, I'm having a hard time believing that we could actually change regulation within the, the permit period. Honestly, it's taken so long to do it the first time. But, you know, within that permit period where it's still approved, has not expired, I, I have a hard time understanding why we would change the rules where an approval has already been granted. And so, just wanted to kind of delineate the, the difference between operational updates as, as they happen throughout the life of the well and maintaining, you know, updated code per regulation, once you're past the permitting phase, versus what it takes to get an approved permit. And within that period of the approval, the regulations would not have changed for the approved permit if the transfer wasn't happening, right? And so, I, I don't think it's an, an attempt to get out of anything. I think it's just, it makes sense to me that, you know, if the new operator can meet the obligations of the permit, and they do so within the approval timeframe, it doesn't make sense to ask them to restart the process. However, wells that are sold, that have already been drilled, completed, and are in the producing phase of their life absolutely need to be compliant with current regulation.
Councilwoman Madera.
Yeah, I think I'm agreeable to staff's proposal after the city attorney's clarification on that.
Thank you. Councilman Hurst.
I didn't mean to have my hand up still, but I'm agreeable to staff's proposal.
Councilwoman Noble.
If, since these regulations have been worked on for the past three years, I'm curious where you see them applying since the ROA was already approved last September and signed that put in place regulations or BMPs that were far less strict than these potentially would be. There isn't really any vacant land left in the north unless perhaps River Run area. But I don't see where any, any vacant land would be, and I'm, I'm just curious, what was the purpose stated to you by the previous council in terms of coming up with regulations? Why did they want regulations if they weren't particularly going to apply to anything?
I, just to clarify, the regulations, and, and I may have overspoken the, the three years of negotiating the ROA and working on the regulations. At one point, we're working in tandem. But the completion of the ROA preceded the conclusion of regulations. I cannot confirm without going accurately, without going back to, to notes and reviewing a number of council meetings to determine the specific reason for delaying the enactment of regulations. for delaying the enactment of regulations over concluding the regional operator agreement though.
I believe it was twenty, twenty eighteen, by the way, it was twenty eighteen that it began.
That the operator agreement was executed?
No, it began. The, the process began in tw- early twenty eighteen. That was when extraction first came to the city.
That's correct. And in the fall of twenty seventeen, I believe, was the time when we had spoken with the council. No members of which are, are on the council right now about the state of our oil and gas regulation. So you are correct. You are correct that this, these regulations would have limited impact on potential sites within the city. Um, currently, because of the operator agreement, um, th- these regulations would apply to any land annexed to the city in the future as well. But I cannot speak to council's motivation in wanting to have the regulations proceed beyond or proceed after the operator agreement. But that is an accurate reflection that the regulations would have limited impact to the sites covered by the operator agreement. And I believe that that has been addressed throughout the negotiation and approval process and public comment process of the operator agreement and the drafting of these regulations.
If I may share Robert to your position about land to be annexed into the city, I would like to qualify that our plan uh, has identified that we still, and what we've kind of shared in our most recent communication to the council is that we still do have thirty-five, uh, square miles of undeveloped growth area uh, that any of, any future regulations and standards in place would apply to. And that could, that could also apply to any potential oil and gas development activity within those, within that future growth area and boundary.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yeah, I have a one question and then a statement. Not sure who can answer this, but do each of these operators have their own sales tax license in the state of Colorado?
I don't know the answer to that. I assume every separate business entity would have its own sales and use tax license in the city. Its own business license is how the city treats it. They're the same license currently. Um, as far as state taxation, I don't know how they, they register for that, if that's a taxpayer identification number. Um, I don't know if they would be subject to a sales tax per se, uh, because I don't believe they would sell anything directly, but I'm, I'm not familiar with that. Is there?
Well, I was just trying, well, I'm just trying to figure out, because with state law, if can, you know, we're just wanting them to be allowed to transfer permits, but can, if it, if they do have a state sales tax license, um, how are they transferring, you know, their, their, you're not a, from what I understand, you can't transfer your state business license in the state of Colorado. So that's something else. I'm curious how they're allowed to do that if, you know, we can find that information out as well, because I thought you're not allowed, from what I know in the state of Colorado, to transfer yourself, your state, um, business license for, for taxes.
That may be more along the lines of transferring a social security number, something like that. Um, but as far as selling a business or any asset of a business or a, um, permit, I think that's more of what we're looking at here. I think, I believe some, some licenses have limited transferability, like a marijuana, license does have a limited uh, transferability, but I believe those are different. And I understand that oil and gas is highly regulated, but the, I think there's a difference between a license and a, than a land use operation permit as well.
Cause can you just, I, you know, possibly Robert, find that out? And then I, you know, when a new operator comes in on an old permit before the permit is approved, there should be no grandfather clause, um, plain and simple. You know, like I said, I can't stress that enough. I don't feel anyone should be grandfathered in, um, period. And like I said, it's, it's the same as maintaining your nursing license or driver's license, your physician's license, you know, so I think they should have to reapply and make sure nothing, you know, was check out the company before we disapprove someone because since they purchased it from someone else. So, you know, that's just how I feel. Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Um, I'm in agreement with what, uh, staff has suggested with the changes.
Councilwoman Smith?
I'm in agreement with what staff has proposed.
Councilwoman Wadiola?
I'm, I'm I'm a little torn. You know, I think staff did a lot of good work here. Um, but I'm also thinking, you know, if wh- well, why wouldn't they want to reapply? And maybe staff could help me. What's the the hardships of that if they want to be good corporate partners?
Guys, can I clarify something real quick? Based off of the, the, the staff recommendation, they have, the, the company has to be checked out from A to Z before they, before it's approved to move forward. It's simply the the land that the, the permit's on that's not reapplying. They're not reapplying to make sure. A- as, as Mr. Sheasley said, if all of a sudden we have a setback of a thousand feet and they're at seven hundred and fifty feet, now we've just hurt the city because nobody can buy that. And now we're going to be sitting on a company that just went out of business. There's nobody's going to buy a dead well because it's now out of compliance. Now the city has to eat all the costs and, and cap that well and do all, you know, do all the process to remove it. And so to me, it seems that what the staff is suggesting is exactly what everybody's kind of getting at. Is we have to make sure that the company's in good standing and going to be, going to be compliant. That's exactly what they're saying.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, and then, so I'm all right with that because it's accountability piece. And the other thing, nothing to take away from you, Director Rogers, but is there a way that we could see it too, instead of just written consent of the director? Uh, does it come before council first? Um, not even us to vote, but just a notification. So we know this is happening and you know, because of incidents in the past, we just get bombarded on social media. Hey, this company's buying this company.
No worries. And I, I, I don't take any umbrage to, to the comment. You know, I hope I don't get hit by an ice cream truck as well. All joking aside, I, I think there's an opportunity that we can work with, uh, city attorney's office and crafting language in which if that request does come before me, I can then present a report to council on that determination that was made. Uh, so that way it will allow for a level of conversation or communication between you and I, uh, as the council uh, with respect to how that, how that criteria was met.
And if this, uh, transfer happens, do they have to follow the public hearings or the community meetings, neighborhood meetings, uh, criteria?
We haven't specified to that extent the detail which, in, in which the process that they would have to be governed by. Uh, I would say for the accountability piece, it was more of a determination about being compliant with what was approved and in place of that approval and demonstrating that they would be able to, for lack of better words, take up that mantle and continue with what was determined at the time of council's, council's decision-making. Uh, compliant to, uh, the land development code in place and stand, and other applicable laws.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I'm good with the, what staff is recommending. Thank you.
So I, I have been opposed to the idea of transfer. Um, I see that there is great value in a company needing to reapply in giving us an opportunity to impart our new land development code on the permits whenever it goes through. You know, I think of if I were to purchase a piece of property and then I want to turn around and sell that piece of property and somebody wants to come along and build on it, then they would have to follow the code at the time they wanted to build. And I see this as the same way. At the same time, I see the risk involved of, do we end up with a piece of property that nobody wants to purchase? Nobody wants to do anything with the well. I keep hearing then the city's on the hook, but that's why we just agreed to have a ninety thousand dollars per wellhead and, and a bond in order to deal with that kind of stuff. So I think that argument goes by the wayside. So I think there may be a compromise I could come up with as we go with the staff's recommendation, but I would like to see as a fee associated with transferring that permit be at ten or fifteen percent, because there is going to be staff working, going through and making sure that everything is still um, good to go. And I'd hate to see that we have to absorb that cost ourselves without anybody who is transferring that permit, having to pay some of that. So I'm good with going with staff's recommendation, provided we include, uh, include some kind of fee for transferring that permit. That being said, Councilwoman Noble?
Councilwoman Grimes?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think I've already said this, but I, I do agree with staff's recommendations. I just want to, I, I feel like we're really talking about two different things here as a council at different points in time, and I want to make sure that there's clarity around transfer of permits versus transfer of drilled and producing wells. And my understanding is the city wouldn't have authority over an operator being able to sell an existing producing well. Could, could someone, uh, Mr. Hader or someone address that?
Sure. The, the permit is what authorizes the land use. So if they're selling the wells, they're transferring the permits with that.
So we're not, you're not speaking specifically then about the permit to drill. You're talking about lifetime. You see, when I think of permits, it gives you the right to construct a pad and drill a well.
And that, so I, I would say try to expand that into, it's a permit for the operation of the well, for the lifetime of the well to, to do the, the production and everything.
Okay, that's a little bit different application than the COGCC's use of the word permit. Uh, thank you for clarifying. I, I also wanted to just ask a cou- couple of questions. Um, there will be no new ROAs once the development code, land development code is put in place, correct?
There could be. The, the land development code amendments do not delete the ROA authority, I believe.
But they would be negotiated with the new operator?
Yes, with, yes, with another operator subject to current standards, yes.
Absolutely. And then subsequent to that, um, that question, we're talking about transfer of an approved permit, not an application, correct?
That's correct.
So in the instance of, I, I hate to use one example, but in the instance of extraction, which seems to be the, the place where we're worried, their applications are not approved. So if they are not able to get approval of permits prior to whatever happens with them, a new operator would have to reapply anyhow under the new land development code, correct?
I don't know that we've talked about that, and so I want to make sure, see if Matt's considered that. You're, you're suggesting that an operator that submitted an application that is complete and under review then wants to transfer that application that is under review essentially?
That's the question, yeah.
I don't know if there's a standard practice under the land development code for that, or if we've addressed that specifically. And hopefully I've given um, everyone enough time to think about it while I talk, so that they can come up with an answer for you that I don't have.
So I would look at it, I would look at it as such, and Matt, correct me wrong, as we have applicants submit applications to the city for, let's just pick a, um, a subdivision plat file, uh, a final plat. We may have an applicant that may not be the developer, but will get the sign off off the property owner or the authorization of the property owner to submit on behalf uh, to plat said property. At any point in time, that applicant may drop out of that application. And a new applicant may come in and would have to submit updated documentation to allow for the continued processing of that, of that review or of that entitlement. Let's see, we don't have any land development code provisions that prohibit applicants or the change of applicants during the review process for any and all applications that we have come in. But they have to seek the proper authorization from the property in order to process on the chat if they're not the, if they're not the applicant.
Thank you for that, um, explanation. I, and I, I want to just say that I'm, I'm trying to bring some sense of, um, comfort to council with this line of questions. I think that we have some, some safeguards built in as far as extraction concerns. Um, in terms of their, you know, if they are able to, uh, come out of bankruptcy and approved and they execute, that's the only situation in which they're, they're able to operate under current, uh, current regulation and, and under their ROA. Any other instance almost automatically leads to a new application. If they can't get approved permits, anyone who wants to come in after them would have to apply anyhow. Um, and would be subject to, to a new ROA negotiated at current time. So just, just wanted to point out that nuance. And, and then fi- final statement, I, I support the, the language as drafted.
Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, that conversation kind of led to some points that I was going to make, but you know, th- there's I, I think all of our, our, our goals are to eliminate some loopholes and, and of course, I understand why, you know, uh, 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 was just stated by Councilwoman Grimes, you know, the only way that extraction moves forward under the ROA is if they turn it around financially. But the other way I guess would be is if, you know, a bigger company comes in buys them with full controlling interest as a subsidy uh, or subsidiary, and that nothing changes at extraction oil and gas except the, uh, person who signs the checks essentially. That, those are the only two scenarios that I could see, you know, moving forward that, that the current ROA uh, moves forward. But, but beyond that, uh, can you guys answer the question? What would be the reason to have an ROA after these LDCs are approved? Because wouldn't the LDCs be the minimum standard? So the only thing we could, uh, negotiate in the ROA would be stricter codes or regulation?
Yes. Can I, can I jump? Because I'm, I'm not tallest, though. Um, I just want to say, to answer that question, there's always a possibility to negotiate an ROA if there's something in the best interests of public health, safety, welfare, and the environment. Um, and we don't know what the, the future provides. I, I'm not convinced it that the ROA and the pending applications could not be assigned. I think there are two concepts to think about. One, uh, when it comes to vesting of rights and, and the concept of, of the law that would apply. A new applicant submitting in the middle of a permit application process um, has different expectations than the original applicant. So if the law has changed from the time they took over under a standard application that was submitted, I believe should rightly be held to the new law. Um, under, because they knew what they were coming into. I'm sure some other lawyers could disagree with that. Um, under the terms of, so, so even though we don't have LDC provisions about it, I think there's flexibility there to say which law applies. Um, under the ROA, though, I believe the, the, the ROA itself is assignable and then the rights under it may apply to pending permit applications. Matt, does that sound consistent with your understanding of the ROA?
That's consistent with my understanding of the ROA. Yes.
Okay, and I've concluded. So if y'all wanted to add anything else, please go ahead.
I just wanted to add just a little bit of historical. When extraction first came to us, we didn't have anything in our code that even allowed an ROA. So it was fall of twenty eighteen, I believe, that we did some minor code revisions and added the, the provisions to the code to allow for an ROA to even exist. Um, because we didn't know what to do with, kind of what they were coming to us with. Um, so, so at this point, and I, I think kind of in, in retrospect, when the code was last updated in twenty twelve or so, there was no contemplation at that time that an ROA would be needed, um, that something that would depart so differently from what Um, that's something that would depart so differently from what, from a single application at a time. Um, so. It might be that in the future, someone comes up with some other plan, um, and of course, in, in the case of extraction. For them to make their project work, they're, you know, to try to achieve the economy of scale that they wanted, they wanted to pursue an ROA. To try to, to. To achieve their goals. Um, I don't know if they achieved their goals or not, you know, that's their business decision of how they wanted to pursue their relationship with Commerce City. Um, it's hard to, to, you know, foresee what might come in the future. Um, it might be that an ROA could, could anticipate something that we don't right now, um, so I, I wouldn't take it out of our code. Um, but I don't know how, how it'd be used in the future, um, in that regard.
And I, I do want to weigh in and say that the regional operator agreement, this is somewhat of an obvious statement, but I, I like to kind of rephrase it as. It definitely emerged from the pre Senate Bill one eighty-one timeline where the, the way to increase. Um, public health, safety, welfare, and environmental protections was through a regional operator agreement or a private agreement. Between a city and an operator to go above and beyond what the base COGCC levels are. Um, kind of moving forward and, and kind of to as, uh, City Attorney and Deputy City Attorney, uh, Matt Hader and Robert Sheasley alluded to. Um, is that we, we don't know how that will play out. I think the intent of this and the way that these regulations are drafted are in such a way that the regional operator agreement. Is relatively unnecessary, given that the protections within the land development code are, are going to be high enough to provide those. Basic health, safety, and welfare protections and, and then some, um, and then. Kind of as we go through this process, working with you all and, and getting those main concerns and the most significant protections embedded within the code. Um, that, that's kind of the intent here, and if there's some other creative or unique, um, application of a regional operator agreement that. Maybe it gets, um, additional protections codified some way, that could be a possibility, but that, that's just a statement of the intent from a staff perspective.
Any other discussion on this item? If I, uh, heard correctly, a majority of the council wants to agree to what staff's recommendations was on that slide, so that's what we'll go with.
And if I may just clarify, Mayor, I know you had also discussed, in additions to staff's. Um, staff's proposed language, there was two additions to that, obviously, the discussion of a, of a fee. Associated with that level of review, and I believe also the council member, Portiola. To myself or whoever may be my successor, uh, to you all, or at least a conversation in some form.
Yeah, I don't know if, uh, council, do we have a consensus on those two additions? Councilwoman Noble? Ma'am, uh, Mayor Proton?
I can support both of those.
Thank you, Councilwoman Madera.
I'm agreeable.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yeah, I'm.
Good for me.
Thank you, Councilman Hurst.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Grimes.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. So, you have direction, staff?
So, two timeline, I believe we have a couple of options here. Obviously, there's a discussion with respect to. Um. Once again, the reverse setbacks and wanting additional details and information, I believe it's staff's approach to look at it very simplistically. Uh, for you when we're to bring it. Um, I have asked Dominic if, if able to push and get this done, if. We wanted to keep Thursday in order to continue that conversation, uh, simplistically, what we would provide is what staff's recommended. Or, or recommended language, the impact to. Um, obviously, the, uh, requested change that we heard from council to a thousand, and obviously, the recommended impact to development. Potential of residential lots, the comparison thereof, and then obviously, at the end of that conversation, a confirmation of our. Planning commission and, uh, city council schedule. Um, but. Actually, would you want to keep, uh, Thursday, or if not, just. Put it towards, um, uh, Monday, next Monday, at the tail end or at the beginning of, of the meeting.
Out adding Suncor to the sa- a thousand foot setback. So it was a report, some sort of report on Suncor as well? Not, not, so, I'm sorry. These to choose from here. Okay, thank you.
So, if I may to that, um, council member, uh, it's my understanding, when we took a vote on the arsenal. Uh, not to include the arsenal within the one thousand, and then at a different point in time to come back to.
My understanding was that we were going to get more information and then make a decision.
Yeah, I, I will say, and, and maybe we should go. To, uh, no inclusion and then a, a future meeting to discuss. Uh, we're bringing CDPAG, fishing wildlife, and, uh, the Army Corps. To be able to provide, uh, follow-on information.
That's the way that I heard it as well, um, council. Do you have a desire to explore that prior to, or are you good with the vote as, uh, Mr. Rogers has claimed it took place? If you wish to speak, uh, in opposition, please raise your hand.
So I, I did note we had one vote for Monday. Obviously, we can deliver the maps, eh, prior to that meeting on Monday, once again. That was related to the development impact. If there's other additional information that you would like to see. Uh, I simply make that request to make sure that we are giving you what you would like to know in order to be able to continue the conversation and the discussion.
What was the question, please? I'm sorry.
So I presented a, a high-level outline of what information we would provide to you. In order to assist in your discussion around the reverse setback of, uh, the scale. Additional information that you wanted us to capture in that, uh, high-level format or layout that we would bring back on Monday.
Councilman Hurst?
I have nothing additional, but I, I vote for Monday, not Thursday.
I'm good on Monday.
I agree with Monday.
Same.
Same.
Monday it is, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Outstanding one, being with the reverse setback, so thank you all very much for the conversation around the table today. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
May I just, I know there's a lot of discussion about the ROA and ongoing things, um. Meeting, we can certainly have an executive session to discuss those candidly. Um, and, but having some advance notice so we can prepare would be, be helpful, if that's, if council wanted to put that on a future agenda at some point, we can. Talk about that during the, the next regular meeting, so. We're going to be living under it for some time, um, and the city has rights under it, and want to make sure everybody understands what it is. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Um, I believe that concludes all the business we had scheduled for this evening. We did not have an agenda that gave time for. State more evening special study session for the city council is canceled. Because we are going to take up the remainder of this on Monday evening.